Well, good evening, everyone. It's July 8th, Tuesday, July 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And the call is Lacy City Council Work Session to Order. Councilmember Greenstein is excused, and Councilmember Stedman is not here with us.
He's trying to get a little bit more.
Okay. He's not going to be able to make it here either. But the rest of the council is here, present. I'd also like to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacy, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people, the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Skalaanian Tribe and the Squoxanian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all for the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion, unanimous carries. We have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is our Public Works Standards Briefing.
Take it away, Joey.
Oh, just, oh, sorry, public comment. I used to have a public comment. First up, public comment is actually Jeff signed up first. Thank you for that reminder. Sorry. Jeff, can you come over here? Please introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Browning, and I'm a resident of Lacy. And it has recently come to my attention that you are considering approval of scrubbing of DEI and climate change language from the regional transportation plan. I want to express my opposition to scrubbing DEI-related language from the RTP. Ensuring that we adhere to principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion are fundamental to our communities and the success of this plan. The anti-DEI assertions are wrong on many levels. For one, this administration has yet to specify what qualifies as DEI, or explain why DEI language violates our principles of fairness. Why is it wrong to declare that all are welcome in our communities, and that we encourage all citizens to participate? Why is it wrong to proudly proclaim that we stand with those who were formerly excluded from full participation, such as the differently-abled women, people of color, as well as our native sisters and brothers? They have yet to explain why DEI is wrong, except to say without proof that it discriminates. They are using tactics of intimidation and hoping that we will obey in advance of them having to explain these details. Second, the gutting of DEI will lead to the same old monopoly of racism and sexism that we have been struggling with for centuries. DEI presents us with an opportunity to fulfill the promise in our founding documents that all people are created equal. Professor Timothy Snyder of Yale University, who has been researching and studying the history of autocracy for decades, in his book On Tyranny: Twenty Lessons From the Twentieth Century, the very first lesson is do not obey in advance. History is full of examples. Many citizens of 1930s Germany tried to go along to get along. They tried to anticipate what the government would want. This led the entire country into a slippery slope of moral and political decline. I hope that we can learn from their mistakes. We must hold on to the values that strengthen our communities. Please do not obey in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. Oops. And next up, we have Jim Lazar. Please come up and introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. I'm Jim Lazar. I'm a resident of Olympia, but a future resident of Lacy. I think we are number one on the panorama waiting list. I'm here to speak about the Log Cabin Road Extension, which is shown in a map that I've passed around as the red line across LBA Woods Park. This road was planned primarily to serve the Bentridge and Trillium developments shown in yellow and blue boxes. These developments were to have more than 1,000 dwelling units, and those dwelling units were expected to generate about 10,000 vehicles per day of traffic. Two-thirds of the road showed in a solid line on this map were to be built by the developers at no cost to the city. The remaining third was the responsibility of the city, but these 1,000 dwelling units would each pay about $4,000 in transportation impact fees, generating about $4 million, which would pay for the city portion shown in the dotted lines on the left and right. I live just, currently live just off of this dotted red line. Bentridge and Trillium are gone. The developers did not proceed with them after they were approved in land use. They sold the land to the city. It is now LBA Woods Park. The developments won't be built, and the developers won't be either building two-thirds of the road or paying impact fees for the rest of it. Now, if you turn this page over, I have a map of the area. On the Lacy side, there, Lacy has one street, 37th, feeding into this area. On the Olympia side, there are three: Wilderness, Morris Merriman, and 27th and 30th. Each of the green lines has more available capacity than the remaining capacity on the red line on the Lacy side. That is, on the Olympia side, there's more, three times as much capacity as Lacy could possibly feed to this area. Yes, there are intersection improvements needed on Wiggins Road. Yes, the sidewalk and bike lanes on Morris Merriman are only two-thirds complete and need to be finished. But there is no need for this project, no funding for this project, no sponsor for this project, and according to the TRPC staff, no level of service issues through 2050 with the removal of this project. Please instruct your representatives to the Transportation Policy Board and the Thurston Regional Planning Council to respect Olympia's decision to remove this no longer needed road designed to serve developments that are not being built from the map, and work to improve safety on the remaining existing roads. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council?
So, good evening.
Please.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Andy, and other members of the Lacy City Council. My name is Talana Reid, and I'm here on behalf of the NAACP of Thurston County. We write to you today as the Executive Board and members of the NAACP of Thurston County, and as your constituents, to respectfully urge you to take a clear and public stand in opposition to the proposed removal of all references to diversity, equity, and inclusion from the Thurston Transportation Policy Board's long-range transportation planning documents. This proposal reportedly based on a sweeping and legally questionable interpretation of recent federal guidance is deeply concerning. The relevant executive order from the administration does not prohibit all DEI efforts, only those found to be unlawful. Importantly, such determinations can only be made by a court of law. Courts have already deemed parts of the executive order vague and unenforceable. The effort to strip DEI language from the regional planning documents undermines not only the stated values of our region, but also the trust and dignity of the very communities most harmed by decades of inequitable transportation policies. It signals a willingness to retreat from progress at the expense of historically marginalized groups who continue to face barriers to safe, reliable, and equitable transportation. Just weeks ago, you welcomed the NAACP and the greater black community and issued a proclamation in honor of Juneteenth, affirming your commitment to justice, equality, and inclusive, and an inclusive future. That proclamation was more than a symbolic gesture. It was a statement of principles, but principles must be defended through action. We now call on you to demonstrate that commitment by urging, that commitment by urging the Thurston Regional Planning Council to reject any new, any efforts to remove or weaken DEI-related language, goals, or frameworks in regional transportation planning. To do otherwise would be, would be to abandon the very values of your Juneteenth proclamation sought to uplift. Diversity, equity, inclusion are not obstacles to good governance. They are essential tools for adjusting, addressing systemic injustice, fostering healthy communities, and ensuring that all residents enjoy fair access to mobility, opportunity, and dignity. We respectfully urge you to join with other city leaders across the region in defending these principles and standing firm against legally unfounded pressure to erase them from our planning processes. Your leadership is, in this moment, is critical. Our community is watching, and your constituents, especially those from historically excluded communities, need to see that you will stand with us not only in word, but in action. Sincerely, the NAACP of Thurston County.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing none, then let's now go on to our first agenda item, which is our Public Works Standards Briefing.
All right. For those of you who haven't met Joey Etter, I'd like to introduce Joey. Joey has replaced Tom Styles as Development Review Manager in Public Works Engineering. Joey has a long history here at Lacy. He's worked for Lacy for almost 24 years doing development review. And Joey has many similar traits to Tom, solutions-oriented, you know, solutions-oriented, just, you know, was, was, you know, very well fit for this job. So with that said, I'll turn it over. As you know, Tom worked on the Development Guidelines, Public Works Standards, up until he retired in May, and Joey's going to finish them off. So, take it away, Joey.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, we're here this evening to provide you guys with a briefing and an opportunity for additional discussion regarding the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of the Development Guidelines and Public Works Standards. This came before the council little work session on March 11th, back when Tom was here, and then it has since went to a public hearing that was held by the Lacy Planning Commission on April 23rd, at such time that the Planning Commission recommended the proposed amendments for approval to you guys. So, we're coming before you because we have a couple amendments. One that was part of that Planning Commission's public hearing that you guys have not seen, and then one that we have added that the Planning Commission has not seen either, but we wanted to bring it before you. And then at the previous work session, I went back and watched it to refresh my memory, and one of the main topics of discussion at that point was Chapter Four and our separation requirements for street trees from our utilities and driveways, and how that affected the urban tree canopy plan. I guess this is an opportunity to potentially revisit that. I know at that work session, there was a healthy discussion, and I believe it was Rick brought up that it may be worth revisiting. So, that is why we are here today. I want to present you with these amendments, first and foremost, and then Chapter Four, if you guys would like to go further into discussion regarding particularly the street trees and the separation requirements, and how that affects other development standards, or potentially affects other development standards, we can discuss that, too. And then, obviously, I gave you all the chapters that we have amended, in case you want to discuss that as well. We can certainly do that. One of the things I also wanted to bring up is Chapter One, which is titled Planning Issues. That's going to be removed from the Development Guidelines as part of this update, and that language is currently in the process of being, or is going to go through the process of being added into the LMC. And what we're going to try and do is concurrently bring the LMC for adoption and that language for adoption with the Development Guidelines for adoption, so we do not have a gap. If we were to adopt the Development Guidelines now, Chapter One would be gone, and that language would not be in the LMC either. So, we'd have a gap where the language didn't exist, so we're trying to avoid that. So, this briefing, like I said, is to discuss these amendments and potentially Chapter Four, anything else you want to discuss, with the plan being that at a later date, we will come in for resolution adoption along with the LMC language that our CED is working on right now. So, if you look in the staff report, the First Amendment that was brought in front of the Planning Commission as part of the public hearing was regarding private residential streets. And basically, what the amendment does is it allows the SPR Committee the ability to modify private streets, our typical standards for private streets, depending on the number of lots that they're serving. Could be a minor local residential roadway, or it could be a major local residential roadway standard. What this does is it allows the SPR Committee to make modifications to those standards if need be, where that may apply. Where that may apply would be like if you had a cottage development or a cottage-style development. Those don't necessarily front the road. The buildings don't necessarily front the road. They may be out in more of an open space area, so the sidewalks maybe, you know, could meander to provide pedestrian connectivity to those buildings. It may not be worthwhile to have a sidewalk up against the road, knowing that we have that other pedestrian connectivity opportunity. And it may not be necessary to have street trees even. We may have additional landscaping in that open space area altogether. So that's one way it would apply. Another way that it could apply is if we have a road that runs along like an environmentally sensitive area, such as a wetland boundary or a wetland buffer, there could potentially be a large open space that's not developed at all as part of the subdivision. And at that point, we have had opportunities to eliminate sidewalk and planar strips and keep that as a natural area because it's not going to be touched as part of the development. So those are some examples as to where they would modify the private roadway standard. But again, this amendment gives them the ability to do that as they determine it to make sense. The other, and again, that went in front of the Planning Commission and was part of their recommendation through the public hearing. They have seen that amendment, and they are aware of that, and that was part of their recommendation. The other amendment which came up during the last work session, we revised our language for when onsite septic systems fail. What we're finding is even if these systems are located within 200 feet of city sewer, the expense to extend sewer and make that connection has really increased. And so we've decided to draw a line in the sand at 15% of the assessed land and building value. Anything that exceeds that, even if it's inside that 200 feet, we would allow them to repair or update their existing onsite septic system because of the expense. One thing that Rick had brought up when Tom was presenting this at the work session was what does that do or how does that change or how is that affected in shoreline jurisdiction areas? So we have changed the language to say that that 15% number does not apply within the shoreline jurisdiction. Shoreline jurisdiction is not part of that exemption. So that's the adjustment or the change that we've made.
Is that financial, like is that math happening often enough that the cost of putting in sewer instead of replacing the septic tank is 15% or more of the value of the property? That's huge.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. So we've had, I think, maybe up to a handful of them, three to five, I would say, which isn't a lot. But these don't happen on a frequent basis, you know, they don't happen frequently enough to say if that's a lot or not. I would say that based on what we are seeing, it is becoming more and more prevalent. It is something that is happening more and more often. It used to be if you were within 200 feet, we would say you have to connect to city sewer, and it was, well, everything costs money, but it was more reasonable to make that connection. Now, when we are having these situations come up, it's becoming more and more prevalent that that cost does exceed 15%.
So it's not that the rate of onsite septic tanks is failing, is increasing, or maybe it is, but it's really the cost of like doing the same work costs a lot more now than it used to?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. I mean, we are seeing, we are still seeing our fair share of onsite septic system failures, but a lot of them are in areas where we don't have sewer, so this doesn't even come into play.
Yeah.
So when we are in areas where we have sewer within 200 feet, that's where it comes into play, and it is definitely becoming more common.
So 400,000 equates to 60K, right? In this scenario? So then, is, what would it cost? Well, I guess the cost is going to be contingent upon the length, right, of however far it is from the house to the next sewer line?
Correct.
So what is like an average cost of a sewer extension from a main to a parcel?
So to say there's a fair across-the-board average would be tough, but what I will tell you is we had an example on Carpenter Road. It was a duplex, had a failing septic system. They were within, they actually were on the corner of Carpenter and a private road. The sewer was in Carpenter Road. So the extension was probably 150 feet, and that cost for that extension and the onsite septic improvements, well, not onsite septic improvements, the step tank improvements that would come with that to connect to city sewer was around $100,000. And so that was one that we said, okay, we're going to let you go ahead and repair the septic system. That cost was too absorbent. We do have another example where the lot owner is actually located in the shoreline jurisdiction, so it doesn't apply, but there are, I think, 250 feet from sewer, and I believe their estimates were 80 to 100,000 as well. And what we do is we'll get two estimates from their contractors, and then we have an internal engineer that does a cost estimate as well, so we can make sure that we're not getting overly inflated numbers just to swing things in their direction. And yeah, they're right in the ballpark, so.
And then a sewer repair job?
Yeah, so.
Sorry, a septic repair job?
So you're talking about what would the cost be for like a septic repair? It's 35 to 45,000. So it's still expensive, but definitely far less than the 80 to 100,000 range that we're seeing.
That's a 60% discount.
Yeah, so.
Andy, does that cost also the connection fees? Because I know that we have some, you know, lot is, has some rebates and some other things. Was that just the construction, not the connection fees?
That, well, in the particular, in the case of 100,000, that was just the construction. That didn't include the connection fees. And yeah, you're right, we are applying rebates. We have not gotten to the point where we cannot apply those anymore. They are still applicable. They are still available. So yeah, that, in that case, that was 100,000 plus our utility connection fees with the lot rebate. But to take it a step further, that 15% does include our utility connection fee. So if the construction cost came in under that, but our utility connection fees pushed it over that, we would recognize that as well. And that particular amendment did not go in front of Planning Commission as part of the public hearing. That was an amendment that we made in response to what came up at the previous work session, and it was not modified prior to the public hearing. So we wanted to present that to you this evening so you are aware of it. And then basically from there, I've included all the chapters. The bullet points are the same as what Tom provided you previously. But Chapter Four was, I think, really what we were going to focus on primarily, although it's your discussion, you can take it wherever you wish, but we thought it might be worth revisiting the street tree standards or having further discussion if you would like.
Obviously, there's a bunch of changes. We have any for naming streets as well? What's the whole, what's the idea behind? Now, it's all just coordinated with city staff and not, it's not as directive as what we have here?
I will be.
Are there any two issues with street naming?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know the answer to that question. Do you know the history or what's behind that?
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
I know of the revision, but I don't know where that particular revision came from. I'm not sure on that.
I had a question, and maybe this is for you, Scott, but Lacy has a fund that is intended to defray some of the cost of sewer connections, but if memory serves, we have totally wiped out that fund through some of our larger, maybe it's like our Ulid like subsidization. So I think we spent it and spent it for like a couple of years' worth of whatever was in the fund.
Yeah, that's correct. So we're, you know, waiting to pay it back. You know, we have a list of projects and have identified priority areas and priority basins that we'll go to, you know, once the fund is restored, but it's, yeah, it's, you know, maybe two years away.
Just in case folks are listening and thinking, well, I wonder if the city can help with the cost of some of these connections if there's public interest involved, but we have identified places where we would want to invest those funds to protect like the water table, and we don't have any money in the fund currently and won't for another two years.
Right.
And so I was absent when we talked about the tree canopy issue. Can we go over that again and see where we left off and figure out if we need, you know, what the direction needs to be on that?
Sure. Yeah, so the biggest issue that we're running into is we have much smaller lots, and for those lots, if they're not rear-loaded with like an alley, we end up with front-loaded lots that are smaller, and we end up with a lot of driveways. In addition to that, we end up with our water meter, boxes and setters, fire hydrants, streetlights. If we're in an area where we have step systems, we end up with step service boxes. So we end up with a lot of utility and hardscape improvements in the planar strips. And what we've seen over the years is the street trees have caused problems with our infrastructure, which then costs money and time for us to go out and fix. So what we're doing in this guideline update is we're creating separation requirements to try and prevent that going forward. In doing that, one of the things that Tom said at the previous work session that, when I went back and listened, he did a subdivision called Manor House, I think it had 120 lots, something like that. It was on steps, they were on step systems, which takes away additional space. And out of that whole subdivision, he was able to put in four street trees if we meet the separation requirements that are outlined in this guideline update. So that obviously doesn't, at least based on the discussions that were had previously, seems to be conflicting with your guys, what was it, two years ago, you guys put in place the?
The five.
Yeah. So that was the topic or the main point of the discussion.
I think we also talked about how there are other sort of mitigation factors that can be applied when we put street trees in, like building the, what are those called? Separation, the root barriers and the specific type of tree that we're planting, because some trees have the roots that spread out and damage sidewalks, and some of them maybe do that less, right? So we pick the trees, we do the deeper root barriers. Are those measures not sufficient to prevent the damage or at least mitigate the damage? Do we have to have the trees so far apart that in this case, we just wouldn't be planting trees?
I also thought we were trying to get rid of step systems too, aren't we?
No.
No?
No. And we can shut down development.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it's a necessary tool in the toolkit. And so let me just say, obviously, we can't define a solution if we haven't defined a problem. So what the problem is, as Joey kind of identified, there's two things. I mean, we've learned from the history, but then also with this desire for affordable housing, you know, and compressing lots, there's not enough room to put everything in there. But there are essential things. We have to have water. We have to have power, communication, gas, all those things. You know, those are absolutely required, but there's just not enough room, so something has to give. The other thing is, if the goal is affordable housing, you know, if we can't make these changes, then these result in higher, as Joey mentioned, O and M costs, which then increase the cost of people's taxes because we have to maintain these things. So that's the problem. That's what we're trying to solve. So, you know, Tom, Joey, you know, operations folks who deal with this stuff, community economic development, took a look at, you know, how can we prevent excessive maintenance? And the, you know, the items that came up were the items that are mentioned in these changes. To answer your question, root barrier is not foolproof. It can be installed properly. Everything can be installed properly, but we can, it helps reduce, but, I mean, I think anybody with sprinkler system, you know, knows that.
I've seen some pictures. I looked at a picture last night.
Yeah. I mean, when the roots are almost microscopic, you know, they can get into those areas. They grow, they're sinking water, and, you know, and so, yeah, root barrier isn't bulletproof. And we are, you know, moving over to a more select tree type, but with, you know, this desire to downsize lots, it's, you know, there's just too many conflicts, and we're trying to reduce the conflicts. We really don't have an option where we put driveways. We don't have an option where we put streetlights. We don't have an option where we put our utility boxes. So we're in a little bit. We're just trying to reach a goal.
Then can we move the tree off of the street and have it go someplace else on the property and required? I mean.
Well, with these little lots, you know, and I live in Kensington, so, you know, I live it every day, but yeah, if you have a front-loaded house, which, you know, which we do, yeah, by the time you have your driveway, there's not a whole lot more width in the lot. And so if there's a step system, we don't have step, but you still have all your utility runs coming in and parallel to the house. So there are multiple conflicts, and if there is a step system, a step tank required, there's essentially no room on a lot of these, you know, front yard of these small lots.
Do the utilities split the lot? Like you put it on the line so that the line goes into each house to conserve space?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like on the property line?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
So yeah, I mean, I can tell you the best of the best have looked at this problem, and, you know, the people that designed it, the people that operate and maintain it, and have tried to troubleshoot this, and this is the best solution that there is.
And I don't know what the, I don't know what the controversy is. If we can't do it, we can't do it. I mean.
And there's also other aspects too with the planning for these development projects, subdivisions, or short plats, multifamily projects, that's still set aside of 10% of open space, 5% of that being in tree track, connecting multiple pockets. So you still are achieving some canopy, it's just not along that street corridor. And then also looking at plantings and yards, we do currently have minimum, or tree ratios for lot sizes. However, that's going to be a challenge in going forward because of some of the middle housing standards that need to be incorporated by, mandated by the state legislature. That's going to also reduce that opportunity. And then as Scott and Joey mentioned earlier, in the front yards, if you have step systems, that's a whole nother piece of utilities, of infrastructure that is also create a challenge in these smaller lot neighborhoods. So what size does the lot get down to, do we get to this issue? In terms of the width of the lot?
Well, I can tell you that the lots in my neighborhood are 50 feet wide, and, you know, and I mean, we're seeing proposals for 40 and that. So, you know, and then, I mean, I could get into the whole philosophy of parking, but yeah, rear-loaded creates parking issues as well. So, yeah, there's.
So are we talking about 40?
What's that?
Talking about 40? And at 40, we have to?
Well, even at 50.
Even at 50?
Yeah.
Anywhere that you can't have a 10-foot separation, right?
Right.
That's the proposal.
Right.
Why 10 feet and not five or seven?
Well, I guess, you know, we could show you pictures, but that's been determined based on kind of where we've had areas of conflict and damage that we've had to deal with.
Yeah.
Well, nobody wants to see a repeat of what happened on College Street near 22nd, where all those trees were planted, and then they proved to be the inappropriate tree for the setting. And then we had to live with matchsticks along College Street until we replanted. So going forward, I appreciate what you were saying about trying to get the right trees that will be compatible and all, but I think we need to look bigger picture, and obviously, we don't want tree roots fighting with infrastructure, but we still need to keep our tree canopy in Lacy. So are you all looking at a number of ways that developers can mitigate and plant trees elsewhere, not even maybe in the subdivision, but elsewhere in the city that helps to keep the tree canopy in balance, even if it's like in our parks or something? But I think, I think we need to think bigger picture here and not keep our focus squarely on how much room is in a planar strip on the street and how much infrastructure needs, but, you know, the big picture of what the city needs.
I mean, I think, you know, to answer your question, no, we're not looking at replanting plans. I think that the, you know, that community economic development have done a great job and put together, you know, very good requirements when it comes to tree tracks and that as a part of development, but, you know. But, you know, I believe that in most of our parks, you know, there are, there are parks like Wonderwood that's mostly forested, that does have play areas in it. You know, then you have Bill Bush Park that has some soccer fields, play fields, playgrounds and perimeter trees. So some, some are more play areas, some are more tree areas. But, you know, right off, I'm not, I mean, yeah, I guess we could look for areas like the open fields of Qyo Park and that kind of thing. But, yeah.
I mean, go ahead.
No, you can go.
I just don't want it to get lost that even though we're considering the very real financial cost of the damage that tree roots do to our infrastructure, it's not as if trees don't also create value, right? Because they keep temperatures lower, which is going to help us as summers continue to get hotter. Like, they help preserve a quality of life in Lacey that is not without, like, we could define the value of that also. So it's not like, get rid of the trees and we're going to save money to allow for, you know, lower permitting fees that allows for, you know, more affordable housing. But a lot of people might not want to live in a neighborhood with no trees on really hot days when the pavement is too hot to walk on, you can't take your dog walking. Like, there are all these benefits to trees that we don't usually measure with dollars.
I'm going to ask Vanessa away, because I think there might be some opportunity to, or to look at development regulation once we get to the comp plan update and going into the development regulation conversation, so.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Rick, and good evening, council. We did talk with our public works department about how these standards are not mutually exclusive of private development as we've been talking about tonight. So working together in partnership following the update of these chapters to try to figure out what some sort of development package we could bring before the council to look at tree preservation or new tree plantings as a part of development, maybe looking into 2026. But in the meantime, looking at adopting the spacing standards to protect the infrastructure, but coming back to council with kind of a phase two analysis that will look at both the private side and maybe if there are opportunities within the public right of way as well.
I think we'd even talked about putting, like, tree planters in the middle of, like, cul-de-sacs, right? Just something to have more green, green life in a neighborhood that hopefully wouldn't interfere with those connections. But I like the idea of revisiting it and even coming up with ways to incentivize more trees in development.
So in, in these developments that we're talking about, the green spaces, we have, we have clear guidance and ordinance for green spaces in developments. Will those change or, or will they remain the same with, without this canopy?
I don't, you want to answer that, Vanessa?
Is that, am I making sense?
I think so, I think so. So looking at the difference between the public space, I'll call it that, but the right of way space, which is the standards that we're talking about today versus the private side, we have green space standards as a part of private development that would be within tracks or open space.
Yeah.
Those are not being proposed to be amended as a part of the proposal before you today.
So while we're removing trees from the planter boxes, we are not adding trees anywhere else in the development with this?
Not at this point. I think what Vanessa was saying is that's something we'll look at going forward.
And we have to remember, this, like, how many more big neighborhoods do we have coming to the city of Lacey in this circumstance, right? I mean, we, we are pretty much built out, and so this is.
We don't have another Edgewood Road.
Yeah, and so I understand the importance of this and we need to be cognizant of making sure we keep our tree canopy. And I think that's a really important value here, here in the city of Lacey. And I think we'll try to do everything we can. And this limited circumstances, when we're talking about these new neighborhoods that are smaller than they've ever been before, you know, then I think it's just a matter of, of the reality of the circumstance that we're in. And, you know, we'll do the best we can and we'll try to, you know, you know, make sure we can plant trees where we can plant trees, but we can't plant them right there in the middle, in front of a house where there's no room. I get that, I mean, that's what.
Yeah.
Right?
So that new neighborhood across from the rack, right? They've been under construction for, this doesn't apply to them?
Mushroom Corners?
Yeah.
Morel Meadows?
Yeah.
I believe they are looking at having adequate separation, but I don't know what that equates to as far as the number of street trees. It's a problem that we currently have that we're trying to avoid. So I can't answer that definitively. That's not a project I've been working on. But Scott, you can correct if I'm wrong, but I believe they are trying to maintain these separation requirements currently.
One thing I worry a little bit about is, you know, as Lacey built out, then we're built out, so that means we have to look at infill and redevelopment, which is going to consume even more trees to do that. So that's why I'm, I'm so, I'm pushing so hard, you know, to try to find any way we can to preserve tree canopy or create new canopy to offset what has to happen with development.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I, I hear myself saying, I want both things. Sorry, being a little unreasonable, but I want us to have density because that also has a positive impact on like our carbon reduction goals. But I also want people in Lacey to live in neighborhoods that have trees. So just a commitment to try to find ways to preserve tree canopy while also allowing for density to happen is what I'm looking for.
And I think this is about the best we can do, given the information that we have, so.
We just encourage creativity thinking about this.
Yeah, and we, and we've made some adjustments, like we have step tanks when we do have step systems. We are abiding them at property lines. We used to keep them five feet off the property line. If they are on a common property line, we will actually abut them. That does create more room in the front yard. Morel Meadows, which you brought up, that's gravity sewer. Like Scott said, that's better.
Better.
It's not great, but it's better than step. So, and, and you're, yeah, we do what we can to, to maintain separation, but maximize the street trees at the same time.
I appreciate that.
So any other questions?
Appreciate you teeing up the discussion again.
Before us at a future council meeting.
Thank you for your easy to decipher grid that you put together for us.
Actually, I guess I owe that to Tom. I mostly recycled what he had, so. He did, you know, he was, he was great at what he did, so I'm, I'm following in some big footsteps here, but.
Oh, man, own a compliment, please.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Joey.
So next up is our Thurston Regional Transportation Plan Discussion.
Yes, thank you. And I want to invite Katrina Van Every up to the table. Katrina is the Transportation Manager at Thurston Regional Planning Council. Also Scott Ager, our Public Works Director, and Martin Hoppe will be joining us at the table, our transportation engineer. He was hoping to be able to sit.
Sure. Before we get started, I, I do want to address one issue. That's, that's been brought up, I know it was brought today here at Public Comment, and that's the, the conversation around our D E I efforts that we do and, and, you know, our, having equity in our transportation plan, which is something I support 100%. I think what needs to be discussed here is the backstory of, of that discussion. When, earlier in this year, I was, right after this administration had taken over and put out initial mandates about how transportation or equity needs to not be considered in our transportation planning. The National League of Cities, along with the Association for Planning Organizations, the Associations for Representing Counties, they all got together and, and had this conversation on what are we going to do to, about this issue? And in our case, and here in Thurston County, as is in case in most places across the United States, we have already selected all of our transportation projects. Here in Thurston County, we've, we've chosen all of our transportation projects through 2030. And so the, the conversation went to, what can we do to protect our transportation projects that we already have funded? And obviously, a lot has happened since that conversation first happened. But at the time, given the information we had at the time, the discussion was, let's not do anything, let's try to keep our, our local decisions that have happened, let's try to keep those transportation projects funded. And if that meant taking out some language, if we could still keep those, those projects funded, then that was the recommendation coming from the planning organizations. So I actually was, had a conversation with our former executive director of the Thurston Regional Planning Council and, and had given that update to him right before the Transportation Policy Board met. And he, you know, said, you know, this is a big issue because we're, everyone's trying to figure out, what do we do? And so I talked this over with him and he had already done some, some backwork and, and saw that there was, you know, eighty-two different references within our regional transportation plan that would have our, our RTP be of federal compliance. And so the question was, is what, what do we do? Do we take that language out and try to secure that funding and build all these projects that had equity built into it? Or do we keep that language in there and have, and have this worry that we can't build all of our projects? And this conversation happened at the Transportation Policy Board and we were more concerned about trying to build those projects because it had a real life impact on people. And so the, we're still very, been committed to, to equity, to every, to the values of this community. We were just trying to figure out way, how do we keep federal dollars coming to our, our community to make sure that these projects were built? That was then the recommendation of the Transportation Policy Board, was try to do everything we can to hold on to that funding. Between that conversation and, and when it went up to the full board, that back conversation sort of wasn't, wasn't discussed to the full board. And since then, there was actually some other language that came out that said, it won't be enough just to take out the language and a whole host of other things. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, our community knows Lacey's commitment to equity and inclusion, everything that we're trying to do and all the decisions that went into funding our transportation projects is something that we stood behind and I still stand behind. And we were, the decision was is, you know, we're not going to change any of our projects. If at some point we have to change our projects, then that was going to be a no-go for us. But if, if all we had to do was take out some language, but we could still build the projects, then that was going to be the compromise. But obviously, since then, a lot has happened. And this whole issue of we want to forget about our values here in Thurston County has been, has come up and that is not, not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is, you know, what is more important, talking about equity or actually building projects with equity built into it? And I was on the side of let's build our projects with equity built into it. And so I think it's important that the public understand where, where we're coming from when we're making the decision. We weren't trying to, you know, take equity out of our projects that have already been selected. We were trying to protect those projects. And so now, you get to this, where we're at right now, and there's so much unknown. Even if we took our, the language out, would, would the project still be built? Would the funding still come? I, I don't, we don't know that. And that is the big question right now, is even if we did take the language out, would we still receive funding? And I don't know where we're at on that. But I think that background information is really important to know, you know. I would never support changing an existing project that we already have funding going to that has equity built into it. There's no way I'd support that. What I was trying to support was what can we do to protect those projects? So I just want to start off by, by giving some background on that. But with that, I'll turn it over to.
Can I, can I back you up on that real quick?
Sure.
Because I was at NLC with, with the mayor.
Yes, you were.
And the recommendation from National League of Cities, from a completely diverse set of, of leaders, was you risk losing this money if, if you don't do this. And so they recommended all cities do that. And we, we just hadn't really had a chance to talk. And then this issue became a really big one. So our thing was like, we need to have this discussion and make this, make this decision as a group and hear from the public and talk to people, which really didn't get, we didn't get a chance to do before, before kind of win the, the paper and, and.
Well, yeah.
We wanted to open the discussion and, and make sure that we all decide as a community what, what the best thing to do was. And that included, include everyone is really what, you know.
Yeah, but we, I would never, I don't think anyone in this council would be support taking equity out of our long-term past 2030, you know, construction plans. I mean, that's just, that's not something we would stand for. It was more about what can we do to protect our projects that we already have funded, so. Okay, I'll turn it over.
Great, thank you, Mayor. With this agenda item, the regional transportation plan, there are a couple of items. The one you just spoke to with, related to the, the language within the regional transportation plan. But the other item that's come up through the communication, or, excuse me, community engagement piece of the regional transportation plan review has been the issue of a regional transportation project that's located in Olympia. It's called the Log Cabin Road Connection. And so the purpose of the night is to give an opportunity for Scott and Katrina to kind of give a, some background and context, the regional context of why we have these corridors, why is this debate coming up, some of the recent history, and the pros and cons or effects that we preliminarily know what would be the effect of removing or keeping the Log Cabin Road Connection in as a regional transportation project. And after that, it is an opportunity for council to talk about it, ask questions, and then provide guidance to the council's representatives that are on the Transportation Policy Board and the Thurston Regional Planning Council, because this matter's going to come up tomorrow at the Transportation Policy Board meeting, as well as this Friday at the Thurston Regional Planning Council. And so again, if you look at the staff package, you know, this is a topic that's come up many times over the years, most recently in 2023. In your package, you'll see the letter that was prepared by the city of Lacey at that time, showing the consistency of our recommendation of staff to look at, this is an important connection and it's an important topic. And there's good reason to look at this issue and revisit it because no plan is set in stone. But also looking at, well, should there be studies done before considering removal or not? And, and what the timing of that study is. So I'll stop there and then I'll let Scott kind of provide a little bit of regional context of the regional corridors and then Katrina be able to talk to the, more of the direct history of this project. And then after that, can wrap up with some recommendations and council discussion.
All right, well, good evening again. Next topic. So the map here shows kind of three or four east-west corridors that are designated regional corridors. And, you know, obviously, well, I- I-90 is the interstate, so that's F H W and DOT's play box. But regionally, you know, Martin Way Pacific is a significant east-west corridor. Yelm Highway is a significant east-west corridor. The, the Mullin 37th Log Cabin Extension is a regional designated east-west corridor that's been designated as an east-west corridor for decades. In 1998, there was an east-west corridor study that was done. And I just want to read you the three goals. It was Thurston County was the lead, TRPC, I mean, local agencies were all partners. TRPC was heavily involved. But it said there are three general goals developed for the study. They are, number one, investigate the best way to provide east-west mobility in the region. Two, provide relief to congestion on Yelm Highway. Three, be a multi-jurisdictional project to foster cooperation among agencies and developers. So that was the goal of that study in 1998. But this, the corridor in red, Mullin 37th, had been designated a regional corridor even prior. But this, the corridor in red, Mullen Thirty-Seventh, had been designated a regional corridor even prior to that time. So in, in twenty twenty-three, as Rick mentioned, this, this request, this ask to, to remove the log cabin link from the regional plan has come up over and over. And in your packet is a copy of a letter from twenty twenty-three that Grant Beck and I co-signed. But essentially it noted that because this was designated a regional corridor, you know, that Lacy and Thurston County spent a considerable amount of money on the corridor. You know, in two thousand eight, Lacy improved Mullen Road from Ruttle to the East City Limits. A couple of years later, we made the connection, the Mullen Road connection from Ruttle to College. And then in twenty twenty-one, as you're all aware, Thurston County had a, a significant improvement project to Mullen Road from the city limits out to Carpenter, which included the roundabout at Carpenter. And those improvements continue. So I think we'd all agree that our goal, all of our goal, everyone's goal is to make the best decision based on the best information we have at the time we make that decision. Well, the decision to make this a regional corridor was made decades ago. And, and kind of the point of our letter that we sent in twenty twenty-three and our point today is that there is not new or better information at this time to pull that from the plan. So in twenty twenty-three, we had the same ask as today is that, you know, it was in, it was inserted as a regional plan for a reason. That was the decision that was based on the best information at the time. So before it's removed, do this study, come up with the latest and greatest and best information, and then decide where to go from there. So that's just kind of the, you know, the, yeah, a little, you know, quick history here. Katrina's going to do a much deeper dive into this, but I just want to give you a little Lacy perspective there. So take it away, Katrina.
No, I actually really appreciate that introduction because you've spanned it out to the full, full region rather than just where I've kind of narrowed it in. So that's a great introduction. Again, Katrina Van Evere, I'm the Transportation Manager for TRPC. And let me get my presentation up and ready to go. All right. So, sorry, I've got my, don't have my mouse, so it's a little bit awkward. All right, well, here we are. So just to kind of recap what happened, on July ninth, the transfer, oh, sorry, July ninth, so tomorrow, Transportation Policy Board for TRPC will be asked to make a recommendation on adopting the regional transportation plan. July eleventh, we anticipate that TRPC will take action on that. And the outset, outstanding issue at this time is Log Cabin Road Connection. Should it be in the plan or should it be out? So what's happened since our last TPB meeting in the beginning of June? We've had communications with staff from affected jurisdictions, so Lacy, Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County, and Intersea Transit. And really just wanted to understand what are your concerns with the Log Cabin Road remaining in or being removed from the regional transportation plan? We've had communications with state and federal partners. And really what we wanted to understand is what are the repercussions? If TRPC does not adopt the regional transportation by July eleventh, which is when we're scheduled to do that? Effectively, we won't have a regional plan in place. And what that means is that we won't be able to make any amendments to or adopt a new regional transportation improvement program. And basically that is the, the gatehouse through which projects in the region access federal funding. So we then went back to our TAC members, our Technical Advisory Committee members, which is made up of a lot of our public work staff around the region, and asked what concerns do you have with being unable to make RTIP amendments between now and October? I say October because I am confident that regardless of what happens this week, we should be able to figure out the answer to Log Cabin Road by then. And that is when we are supposed to adopt our next regional transportation improvement program. So as long as we can find a solution by October, we should be okay. And the communication we got back from most of folks was that they did not have any issues. We didn't hear from anyone who had issues with not being able to make amendments between now and October. And then just a lot of research. So thank you to Martin for finding the nineteen eighty-four regional transportation plan because if we have it at our office, it's not there, it's probably at the Washington State Archives.
That was before Martin.
I was going to ask, that's, that's one of the things too is having Martin here, he has a great historical perspective on this issue.
Yeah, so I just want to kind of set the stage from a regional planning context. So in our regional transportation plan that is currently adopted, as well as the plan that is proposed to be adopted or the draft, we have a number of goals that talk about multimodal transportation system, streets, roads, and bridges, public transportation, bicycling, and walking. And what we are looking to do is providing a robust, a reliable transportation system, providing quality travel mode options, whether you are walking, biking, driving a car, transporting freight, taking the bus, all of those apply. We want a system that is coordinated with jurisdictions on a, on new regional connections that provide more direct routes. We want to develop an interconnected grid of local streets and roads that increase individual travel options again. We want to increase the share of trips made by public transportation. We want to have safe and convenient bicycle routes to all of our schools in the region. We want to provide direct, safe, and interconnected pedestrian network. And we want to shorten trip lengths to transit route, schools, parks, trails, activity centers, and other destinations. So that's just kind of generally a lot of the things that we are trying to accomplish with our transportation system. So this kind of gives you a short timeline of the, the iterations of our regional transportation plan. And that first one is from nineteen eighty-four. It's the transportation system plan for the Thurston metro area. So this is the first plan we did after TRPC, our region became a metropolitan planning organization. It's the first plan we did after Intersea Transit was formed. And, you know, since then, we've had five different iterations of the plan. We've had amendments and updates to, to those plans during that period of time. And what is consistent across that time periods for the last forty years is that we've had three projects, widening Yelm Highway, extending Mullen Road, and extending Log Cabin Road. So far, we have widened Yelm Highway to two lanes in each direction. We have extended Mullen Road all the way out to five-ten. And we are looking at the last piece, which is extending Log Cabin Road and making that final connection in, in that east-west corridor. So here we are in twenty twenty-five. This map shows kind of the intensity or the, the federal functional classification of our road system in the area. So red are our highest volume roads. Those are the, the stra, are principal arterials. And what you'll notice is that Yelm Highway and College Street are both principal arterials, and they are also strategy corridors. And basically what that means is that widening is not the preferred alternative to handle vehicle volumes. We are looking at alternatives to that. Your green streets like North Street, Kane Road, Log Cabin, including that dash line which represents the Log Cabin Road Connection and Wiggins Road, those are all minor arterials, so just a step down from those principal arterials. Still handle a lot of, of volume. And then purple roads are our major collectors. So still, still a lot of vehicles, but not as much as our, our major, our minor and major arterials. And so Morse Merriman and Wiggins Road are both major collectors. What you see here are the IT bus routes, which are on these roads. It's Route sixty-four, sixty-eight, and ninety-four. These buses are at thirty-minute intervals. There is some overlap, so there may be places where it's at a shorter interval of service. But generally, those routes are all thirty-minute intervals. And then these stars all represent schools in the area. So starting with Olympia High and Pioneer Elementary on the left, towards Tumwater. And then going across the top, we've got Washington Middle School, McKinnney Elementary on Morse Merriman, Kamatchan Middle School, Timberline High School. And then down by itself and, and that bottom by Boulevard Road is Centennial Elementary. So that's kind of the context of what's happening in this region. So let's take a tour, oh, through time and see what's happened. So in nineteen ninety-six, Yelm Highway is a two-lane road. One, one lane in each direction. There might be a few places where it widens to accept those turning movements for left-hand turns, but it is a two-lane road. In nineteen ninety-eight, the east-west corridor study was finalized by Thurston County. That is the, the study that Scott referenced. And it was, again, undertaken to identify the best option providing east-west mobility, alleviating congestion on Yelm Highway, and really fostering cooperation among jurisdictions and developers. The study included special, a special focus on identifying a new road south of Yelm Highway and the urbanized area to take on trips from the rural areas south of, of Lacy, Olympia, Tumwater. And seven corridor alternatives were weeded down from about seventy different things. And they, these seven different corridors were ultimately considered, including widening the Log Cabin Mullen Road corridor. So the Log Cabin Mullen Road corridor alternative assumed that the extension through what is now LBA Woods was made, and it was a two- or three-lane road section. The alternative would have widened that corridor to four lanes, a four-lane boulevard from Boulevard Road all the way out to Marvin Road in the east. Ultimately, widening this entire corridor was found to be expensive and provide little congestion relief for Yelm Highway. So the study ultimately determined that a new road would not be effective in reducing pressure on Yelm Highway, and instead recommended widening Yelm Highway to four through lanes, two in each direction. So by two thousand three, portions of Yelm Highway are two lanes in each direction. And I just cut it off at College Street because that's the environment that we're working, talking about here. But there's more to Yelm Highway than just that. In two thousand six, most of Yelm Highway is two lanes in each direction. In two thousand seven, we have the first development proposal for what is now LBA Woods. At that time, it was a Bentridge development. So from the city of Olympia's records that are accessible online, it says it was three hundred twenty-eight lots of mixed housing types. That may be more or may be less. Records aren't always accurate, and I've heard, heard it was more. So just keep that in mind. In two thousand eight, the Trillium subdivision was proposed. And this was five hundred seventeen single-family townhomes and multifamily units on that portion highlighted on the right. So this is also the time when we have the Great Recession. Housing markets crashed. We saw a lot of loss of building opportunities and desire in, in the, the whole country. So that seems to have really impacted the two thousand seven Bentridge Development Proposal because we haven't, I didn't see any records seeing it go to review with the city council or Planning Commission or any other, other body. It just kind of died on the vine. But that Trillium subdivision continued to chug along. As part of that, they were looking at doing both a zoning amendment and a comp plan amendment to change the land use designation. In two thousand ten, Thurston County begins widening that last section of Yelm Highway. It represents the last portion that needed to be widened to that two lanes in both directions. And at the same time, Lacy extended Mullen Road from Ruttle Road to College Street. And that represented a pretty major connection on, on that corridor.
So just for, just for the record, I want, because this is something that we've heard a lot in, in public comment and information coming to this council and, and public comment to Transportation Policy Board and so on and so forth. This extension between Herman Road and Log Cabin Road was there prior to any thought that there was going to be housing in, in the LBA Woods, right? I mean, this is, this extension wasn't because, was, was because two major, you know, new developments were going to go in there. This, this extension was planned because we needed another east-west corridor through Thurston County.
You're saying like the plan to punch through.
Yeah, has nothing.
Existed before those two development.
Yeah, had nothing to do with those two developments.
So that, that's true. The, the corridor was envisioned before these developments were proposed. And I would also say that cities make assumptions that development's going to help pay for it. So I think it's a reasonable assumption that envisioning that this whole area was underdeveloped at the time, they would have assumed that part of development would have paid for that development of the.
Do you know, do you know if Olympia has collected mitigation fees for this?
I don't know the specifics of what mitigation fees that they have collected. I do know that they did use some of those mitigation, either the mitigation fees or their transportation benefit dollars to identify the corridor, specific corridor for that connection. But I don't know about the mitigation fees.
You mentioned zoning. Did they change it so they couldn't, so no more development could be done there in the future?
We'll get there.
Okay.
But just a real context on the, the topic of the corridor being identified well before development proposals, just a plug for good planning. By doing that, seeing this as a regionally significant corridor, it allows the opportunity to require a development to put, to build that section because it's created a public identity, not a guarantee. Because if the timing of that corridor needs to go forward first, then whoever, whatever jurisdiction it is would be having to look at buying that property and building it as well. There's no guarantee that developments want to do it, but it sets up that scenario.
So in two thousand eleven, that Trillium subdivision, the, the rectangle on the right, that proposal was denied. That kind of messed up that developer's plans. But they came back in two thousand twelve to request a rezone from Neighborhood Village to R four to eight. And what that means is basically they were looking to increase the, the development potential on the property to allow four to eight dwelling units per acre. At the same time, Thurston County finished widening Yelm Highway. So that, that project is done. And now we're at the place where Yelm Highway is widened to four lanes and, or two lanes in each direction. The developer's proposal to rezone that property was successful. They got it, they were approved to do four to eight units per, per acre. And so in two thousand fifteen, they proposed the Ashton Woods subdivision, which consisted of four hundred lots. And then in two thousand fifteen, Olympia formed their Metropolitan Parks District. So Ashton Woods came first, then came the Metro Parks District. And the city of Olympia worked a lot to identify potential park areas to meet their, their needs and their desire to have so much, so much park dedicated per, per person in the, in the city. So in two thousand sixteen, they did identify the LBA Woods site as a potential park, and they began purchasing LBA Woods properties in two thousand sixteen. The purchase of LBA Woods had, the city had some, three or four different goals. One was to dedicate land for the park, dedicate land for a future extension of Log Cabin Road, and to reserve land for housing and neighborhood development specifically along Boulevard Road. And then finally, reserve land for a water tower. In two thousand seventeen, the acquisition of LBA Woods was completed, and they also built the water tower. So twenty, here we are in twenty twenty, COVID nineteen happens. The pandemic impacted everyone, and it shifted how and whether people traveled in the Thurston region. And the impacts of this continue to be felt today, but not to the same extent as during the height of the pandemic. That push and pull that we're experiencing even now between flexible work schedules, That push and pull that we're experiencing even now between flexible work schedules, opportunities to work from home, and return-to-office mandates means transportation patterns remain in flux. And so they have changed, but they're also easing off what the intensity or the intensity of change that we saw immediately after the pandemic was declared. So we're still in the pandemic in 2021, and at that time, in their capacities as chairs of the Thurston Regional Planning Council and Transportation Policy Board, former Mayor J.W. Foster of Yelm and Mayor Andy Ryder provided a comment to the city of Olympia requesting the Log Cabin Road connection remain in the city's comprehensive plan. The city was going through some comp plan amendments, and one of the proposals was to remove this as a project. And so I'm just going to read a quote from the letter that the mayor's provided. It said, "The Log Cabin Extension Project is a regional project and is consistent with the goals and policies set forth in the RTP, including the goal of connecting existing transportation infrastructure. It provides a parallel route to Yelm Highway for points in South Lacey and beyond, and was envisioned to connect with the infrastructure improvements already completed by the city of Lacey. Of note, our understanding is that a previous study for the Yelm Highway widening indicated the need for the Log Cabin Extension ten or more years ago. This was most recently affirmed by the city of Olympia staff during our update of the regional transportation plan, and it was on this basis that it is included in that plan. We are not aware of any significant change in conditions that would alter the need for this future connection." So ultimately, the city of Olympia decided to amend its comp plan and removed the Log Cabin Road connection. That then triggered their desire to see the RTP reflect their local plan and remove the RTP from, or sorry, remove the Log Cabin Road connection from the RTP. They wanted to take that project out and replace it with the Southeast Olympia Street Connectivity Study. Right now, it's known as the Olympia Street Connectivity Studies, because it's not just this area, it's other areas of the city, but this is one of those focus areas. And in 2023, at the tail, going through this amendment process, TRPC determined that the project should remain in the RTP until such time as that study is completed and demonstrates the road is no longer necessary.
I also want to back up a little bit. Back in about around 2015 time, yeah, I would say it was 2015, maybe 2016, before Olympia began purchasing the Woods property, we had a, you know, quite a bit of pushback from the people in this area about the construction and the size of this Log Cabin Road connection. We had, city of Lacey had just finished our section, which was the typical, you know, connector here, where we had two lanes, a planar strip, you know, bike lanes in both directions, and it took up quite a bit of space. And there was a desire at the time saying, hey, can we take a look at this connection and see if we can preserve more trees? And so the city of Olympia went through that study and came back with an alternative to the proposed connection at the time, where it didn't have the traditional, like Lacey's section. It actually meandered a little bit more. It allowed for a separate bike path, and by doing that, it preserved some of the bigger trees in there, and it was an alternative to what the original, the original connection. It took less trees, it wasn't the full two lanes, it was, I think it was a single lane in each direction with a separated pedestrian path for bicycles and pedestrians. And so that was, at the time, the compromise we made for this connection. And so, you know, it went through Olympia's process, it went through, came to TPB, we all agreed, we, that's, we'll make that compromise, because we did want to save as many trees as possible through this time. And so, fast forward another six years, again, there is a very understandably vocal group that didn't want that connection, and that's when we're at here and at this next part, where the city of Olympia was looking to take it out completely, and we, at the time, the compromise was, okay, let's do the, make sure we do the study before you take it out, because maybe the study will say there's another alternative, maybe there's another path, but until we get the study, we're going to, we're going to leave this in here until the time the study is done. And that is what everyone agreed upon at that time in 2021. So that's, I'll let you then take it from here.
Okay. So let's talk about the land use context in this area. And I'm not talking about the LBA Woods properties, because that is now a park, so the development potential there is for a park, not for residential. But there are other parcels in this area that have potential to be redeveloped or developed. So the land use assumptions in this part of Olympia that you see kind of circled indicate we're likely to see five or fewer housing units per acre in the vicinity of Wiggins and Herman Road. So I did check with the city of, or staff at the city of Olympia, and these assumptions are still valid as the city moves forward with its comp plan update. So I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a disconnect between the level of intensity that the city's expecting, especially with all the housing changes and the GMA changes, and what we are projecting out to 2045 and assume out to 2050. So right now, those are still in sync with each other. Olympia city staff also noted that there has been a fair amount of interest from developers for the properties around Morse Merriman and Wiggins Road. The utility extensions that come with such development would likely trigger additional development in the vicinity. So this is an area that is on the cusp of seeing more development, primarily residential. So let's talk about regional model. So part of the discussion that we have here is what's happening in the regional system and how TRPC does its modeling and what it's used for. So I just kind of want to set the stage for what are the limitations to that model? First is the intent. When we do our regional model for the RTP, we are evaluating level of service for vehicles and congestion for the PMP. That is, that is what we are looking at. And we also use it to identify assessment areas where we say, hey, something is happening on the system or on our transportation system here. We don't know what it is based on the information we have, we should assess what's happening here. And a lot of times, that's where studies will come from or jurisdictions will take, decide to investigate more and decide on developing a project for an area. So that's what we use the model for, for the RTP. It has other uses, but in this context, that's what it's for. It is the PMP only. We don't look at school drop-offs in the morning on Morse Merriman. We don't look at other congestion generating issues and concerns. So it is really just limited to what's happening in the afternoon when everyone is getting off work. It is a big-picture model. It is taking a regional view. We don't look at intersection controls, we don't look at signal timing and other features that are also important, not only for regional mobility, but also local mobility. And the city has more detailed modeling capabilities that they use to investigate things that are happening locally and plan things out that way. Transit. So with our regional model, we have the ability to calibrate to current transit service, but it is difficult to project that far into the future what transit needs will be. I was at an IT meeting last week, and, you know, just because a road is built does not mean that IT is going to put a bus on it or a service on it. And those are just unknowns until we have more information, know what the population is, other things. For active transportation, so bicycling and walking and being a pedestrian, it is difficult to calibrate our model to that information, because we just don't have very much. Sorry, I've got a little whirligig happening here, but we'll see how far we go. I might have lost my connection. Let me see. Let me try this one more time.
Is this? What does this mean?
Yeah, that's the connection, that's where we put in, and that'll get everyone out there. Get us through.
No, that's, that's contracted, the road thing's right there.
There we go. Woo! I was close. All right, the next one. We don't know, projects that don't exist, we don't know what we don't know. So if we don't know that a project is coming, or it is going to be built, or, we can't incorporate that into the model until we know. Street network redundancy. For the regional transportation plan, we don't use the regional model to determine how to alleviate pressure on the transportation system. I'm going to, looks like it's going to disconnect again, so is there a possibility I could get you guys to pull it up and slide through? We're on slide 23.
Of?
Thirty-seven.
I keep losing my internet here too, so I'm not sure what's going on.
All right. So street network redundancy, again, we don't use the regional model in this case to determine how to alleviate pressure on the transportation system due to road closures, emergencies, responding to climate change and natural disasters. We can do that as part of other projects, but it's not part of what we use the regional model for, the RTP for. And then finally, utility siting. Roads are used to connect and cite utilities, and lack of a connected street grid can make citing utilities more difficult and more expensive. And that is just not something that we consider as part of the regional model. All right. So, what we know at this stage, based on the modeling that our team has done, is that if Log Cabin Road connection is removed, there are going to be no or negligible impacts to mode split, so who's walking versus driving versus using transit, or vehicle miles traveled. There may be very minor differences, but it is within the margin of error, and so it essentially means nothing.
That's Log Cabin Road westbound currently?
Yeah, that's by the water tower off of Boulevard Road.
Yeah, coming this way.
Mm-hmm. Impacts that we do see is that as part of the regional transportation plan, we have a financial forecast. Basically, that means that all the projects that go into the RTP are fiscally constrained, and there has to be money to build it in the region. If there's not money, a project can't be in there. So what we're seeing with financial forecasts, if Log Cabin isn't built, we have $10 million more dollars to play with or put on other transportation projects and priorities. We also see impacts to vehicle volumes throughout the regional system and our level of service or congestion standards.
Katrina, sorry, just, my brain turned off for a second. Could you say again what mode split is?
Mode split is just who's walking versus driving versus riding the bus.
Okay.
We're not seeing a change in that with this project pulled out.
Okay.
So this map, oops, there we go, shows our 2050 volumes with Log Cabin removed in the PMP hour. So red indicates areas where we're going to see more traffic, and green is less traffic. And basically, what we're trying to move are 180 to 300 trips from Log Cabin Road someplace else in the system. And so the original, this is compared to the original traffic volumes with Log Cabin Road connected. So for the major places that we're going to see impacts are to I-5, you're going to see 20 to 320 more trips.
Can I jump in here a little bit?
Yes.
So, you know, Lacey's history.
Turn on the camera. So this is a comment on how the DOT and FHWA look at short tripping, which this is causing. You know, Lacey did the I-5 corridor study, affectionately known as Lassy. When that was through, then we moved into the interchange justification reports for both Marvin and Martin Way. During those IJRs, DOT made it very clear that it was important for the local systems to take local traffic, and they wanted to see that the local systems were upgraded before upgrades were warranted for interchanges in the interstate. So this here shows that not including Log Cabin directly goes against the DOT's.
Guidance.
Goals and guidance, yeah. Chy is clumsy there.
We also see impacts to Ruddle Road, that will see more trips, and Morse Merriman and Yelm Highway. Where we see fewer trips are on Log Cabin and North, oh, sorry, and Wiggins Road, we'll see fewer, more trips. And then where we're going to see fewer is on Log Cabin and North Street, and then also on Herman and Mullen. So there are, there are impacts to the regional system.
So the green shows improvements, right? Fewer trips.
Green shows fewer trips, red shows more, and the thicker the line, the...
It makes sense, right?
Yeah, because people are going other ways.
Yeah, if you can't make that connection, you won't.
Instead of going through town, you're going to go up to the highway.
You'll go down Yelm Highway, or you'll take something else, because you can't make that connection.
And that's PMP car trips, not average daily trips, too.
Yeah.
Correct.
That's just...
That's just a snapshot, which...
Four forty-five.
The whole system and all trip types.
On a Tuesday.
It seems like this connection would also make that interchange of Herman and Wiggins much safer, because that is not a very safe intersection right there, that T.
So, Herman and...
It's the worst intersection, one of the worst intersections in Thurston County.
So the city of Olympia does have a project to improve that area, and I believe they're looking at putting a roundabout there regardless of whether, regardless of Log Cabin Road connection. So they do have a project called the Wiggins Road Reconstruction that would improve the system there.
Because they also need to, Herman Road is basically, is all in Olympia, too. I keep hearing it referred to Lacey side, but that's city of Olympia. Lacey doesn't come in till the other side of the trail there.
She has Western Trail as the split point between jurisdictions.
All right. So these maps show, and it looks like it got cut off on the bottom, but these maps show the 2050 land use with all of the projects in the RTP. The map on the left shows Log Cabin Road included, you can tell because it has the line through there, and the map on the right has it removed. And so let's just look at the differences that we see. We see that Fones Road is, and Boulevard Road are less congested during the evening commute. We see that Hoffman Road and Yelm Highway are more congested during the evening commute, but they are still meeting level of service standards. What I find most concerning here is what's happening on Yelm Highway. So again, this part of Yelm Highway is an urban strategy corridor, which means that we are not looking at widening it any further. And that means other solutions have to come into play to address that. Since it's a strategy corridor, it's already fully built out, it has bike lanes, and it has sidewalks the full length, that we're starting to see a limitation on what improvements can be done to alleviate pressure on Yelm Highway, and a lot of it's going to fall to transit.
Correct me wrong. Correct me wrong, but, well, maybe look at Martin, though. When we look at strategy corridor impacts, we look at a hierarchy of fixes to that that can be, especially in private development, commute trip reduction programs, ride shares, transit opportunities, but also other, other connections that can be made to reduce flow, and also pedestrian facilities. So, part of that hierarchy would be looking at what are other connections that would take pressure off that strategy corridor, so you're not over...
Right, improved transit would reduce number of vehicles on the road, yeah.
So, a connection point like log cabin would be consideration of a, a strategy, a mitigation of a strategy corridor.
And one thing we've noticed in the last 10 years, college used to be the predominant movement at Yelm and College. Yelm Highway is definitely the predominant movement now.
Is that because it was widened and improved?
I don't think so. I, I think there's just more volume out there, and they're taking Yelm Highway instead of going through College.
Yeah, I mean, there's been a bunch of developments.
And part of that regional context is you have Yelm and College as a, well, it's crossroads, right? It has Raynor Road coming in and Yelm Highway coming in, and it's a travel corridor for a lot of South County to come up to that point, either go up College Street to Martin Way, or down Yelm Highway. So growth in South County affects this corridor.
So if you're at, let's say, College or Ruttle and, and, and Mullen, right, at this point in time, you have to decide, I'm, I'm either going down to Martin Way, or I'm going to Yelm Highway, right, to get across this county or through the cities. You don't have another option.
You can still drive through, just, it just zigzags, you go Morse Merriman, Morse Merriman.
Right, but...
Not fast.
You, you're right, it's not, it's not fast, and...
And that's one thing I heard today and previously, like Wilderness is a neighborhood that has driveways on the roadway, and they're using that as a cut through a street. And the county's getting complaints on that on a very regular basis.
And people cut through there all the time.
Yeah.
Because there is no connection.
That's not safe, yeah.
So if there was a connection between the two, then people wouldn't be forced to make that decision, they'd just go right down the middle.
Yeah, it'd be more of an attractive route, is say you have roadway without a bunch of driveways in there instead of going through a neighborhood.
And we definitely don't want to put more traffic north of there, because there's a school right there. Anyway, okay.
Is the LBA Woods permanently a park, or could they sell that if they wanted to in the future for development?
That is a great question for city of Olympia. I would be very surprised if they ever sold it for development, because it was purchased primarily with their Metropolitan Parks dollars. And there's also some RCO dollars in there, so there might be some strings attached with that from the state. All right, so where are we at now? So, in support of trying to get all the information out there, TRPC staff developed two options, draft revisions to the, the draft RTP. The first option, option A, is to include the log cabin road connection. The only change that we have made to support that is to, since the last draft was released, is to the project sheet for log cabin road connection, and it is to just note that there is, at this time, no project sponsor, but that Olympia is the responsible jurisdiction for implementation. We've heard from many members of the community that it is misleading and inaccurate to say that they are the project sponsor when it is not in their plans, and that's a fair point. And so this, this is how we have remedied that situation. The second option is to remove log cabin connection, and that means removing the project sheet and all references to log cabin road. It means adjusting our financial forecast, or updating our financial forecast, just anywhere that log cabin road touched in little ways here and there, we, we pulled it out. We also think that a new assessment area is necessary, and that is to deal with what we're seeing happen on Yelm Highway from Henderson Boulevard to Rich Road. And then we updated the level of service maps to be consistent with what the new information shows us, and updated our staff response to the public comments log, essentially noting that anyone who talked about regional, or the log cabin road connection, just saying that this project has been removed, but that it may be added back in at a later date if the study that Olympia does shows that it's necessary. So I just kinda wanna go through some of the pros and cons of each option. So, pros.
Did we, I'm sorry, on two, two slides ago, three, I guess, did we, did we get to the right side where log cabin road was removed and, and kinda looked through that?
And she talked about impacts to Yelm Highway mainly.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry if I missed it.
Yeah, just the differences. So you're seeing a increase in, let me go back a little bit. So you're seeing an increase in vehicle volumes and level of service on Hoffman Road and on Yelm Highway. It is still within level of service standards, but again, Yelm Highway is the area that I am, I'm most concerned about, because it is approaching failure, and we have limited options for how to address or alleviate the congestion.
What is, so approaching failure, what, what happens when we reach failure?
Failure just means that it's so congested, people can't move efficiently down the road. And that means they're gonna start looking at other ways to get around the community.
Does that mean we're too late?
It doesn't mean we're too late, it just means that we have more, more issues to deal with. So let's go over some of the pros and cons that at least staff has identified. So some of the pros, you know, log cabin road connection maintains the best-known option for regional connectivity, consistent with past planning prior, or decisions. It doesn't increase future vehicle volumes and congestion on alternative routes. It gives Olympia and the region options. It recognizes the need for the project while maintaining the option for Olympia to demonstrate an alternative approach. It also acknowledges the investments other jurisdictions have made to implement plans for the regional road network that assumed the completion of this connection. It also acknowledges the lack of consensus that we have in the region on this issue, and there is a lack of consensus.
There was a time when we had consensus, right?
Huh?
There was a time when we had consensus.
Yeah, yeah, there was.
Yeah, we've, we've always had consensus, this was the, the difference is, we've, we've had, that this has turned into a park, and there's, that's, that's the difference.
So, another point is that, you know, keeping this in the plan is consistent with the city of Olympia's original intent of purchasing LBA Woods, which included dedicating land for a future extension of the log cabin road. And finally, it maintains planning for the regional road network that has been in place for the last 40 years. So what are some of the cons associated with keeping log cabin in the plan? It is not consistent with standard practice for including projects in the RTP. Generally, what happens when we are updating the regional transportation plan is, we will email out to affected jurisdictions and interstate transit and other transportation agencies, and ask them, here's, here's the list of projects in the, in the, in the plan currently, what needs to change? And then they provide it back to us. And that's how we receive all the projects identified in the plan. So all other projects included in the plan at this time are sponsored by the entity responsible for seeing them implemented. This is the one exception to how we've done it in the last two, three iterations of the plan.
Only because Olympia have made a decision to not sponsor it.
Yes, and I would also say that other projects have fallen out of the plan because the jurisdiction decided not to sponsor it, or felt there was no longer a need for it. And, you know, there's never been this conversation when projects get added into it. So it also contributes to an impression that Olympia has intent to construct this connection when the city, when the connection has been removed from the city's long-range planning documents. Thank you. It does not address community concerns about the impact of the road connection on LBA Woods Park. So we have a public comment period on the RTP for a reason, and what we have heard from many members of the community is that they wanna see LBA Woods maintained intact as a complete park without being bifurcated by the road. All right, so what are the pros and cons for removing the log cabin road connection from the plan? So it does acknowledge there have been changes in our transportation system and travel patterns and land use since 1984, when the log cabin road connection was first envisioned in the regional transportation plan. It acknowledges that the Olympia street connectivity studies need to be completed before determining the correct response to both local and regional transportation needs. It is consistent with the standard practice that we have for including projects in the RTP, and ensures all projects in the plan have sponsors. It accurately reflects the city of Olympia's current intent and long, intent and long-range plans, which include completing the street connectivity studies, but do not include the log cabin road connection at this time. It identifies the need for additional assessment and connectivity in the area, but it respects the authority of Olympia to determine how best to respond to this need. It is responsive to community members who want to see LBA Woods preserved. It does free up funding tied to the log cabin road connection for other transportation projects. And it does not introduce additional level of service failures on the, level of service failures on the region's transportation network through 2050. So some of the cons are...
Before we get to the cons, I have a question, just real quick. The second one acknowledges studying the issue needs to come first in order to consider log cabin road extension. Yet, that corridor is placed by several different regional studies that show the regional need. So, in order to, shouldn't the study come first to remove it, because we're changing past study and information?
That was, that was what we, that is, that was the decision that the Transportation Policy Board and the First Regional Plan Council made back in 2021, was that if this study showed that an alternative could be made, or some changes could be made to this region that didn't allow the connectivity, then so be it, right? That's fine, that's totally up to the, the jurisdictions prerogative, right? But until it's, they show that it doesn't belong, it needed to stay in the...
Or there's other options that we can work on regionally, collaboration to show there's not a need for, that's what...
So, I agree, I don't think that acknowledges the study that issue needs to come first. I think, the study hasn't happened, and if the study shows that it doesn't need to happen, then that's...
We currently have studies that show those needs.
Yeah.
And then we also showed, cleverly modeling, it shows the impact of removing it, so how to, that's, that's...
Yeah, I, I, I agree, that, the wording is not quite right on that.
That's a fair point. What I would say is that, yes, you can absolutely look at it from the regional standpoint, that we've talked about this for 40 years, and this is the plan that we started with and have been building to. That's absolutely valid. And from many people's perspective, things have changed so much in the last 40 years that to determine that this is the only option doesn't make sense. And that's, that's the perception right now, is that building log cabin road is the only option at this stage. And this acknowledges that having a study determine what is the appropriate reaction resonates with people.
But people are still driving cars.
People are still driving cars.
From on the road than there was when this whole plan developed. And what we're saying is, we're going to have less road for them to drive on, is that?
It, it could be that this will not be a road, that they may widen other roads, that they may build a road someplace else. I, I don't know the answer.
And I guess my, my, my point is, when I see this, is it's not to say that you can't ever remove log cabin road, it's just every study up to date shows that it's a need, and we did some very rough, quick modeling that shows that there's an impact of removing it from the regional context, and there's these regional corridors that extend far beyond this one localized spot of the environment that we're, you're talking about, that has layers of effect, community-wide. But why wouldn't the study come first to look at other options that we can work on regionally to follow solutions to show that either this is not needed, or some other remedies are there?
Absolutely a fair point.
Can I just ask one? And this is a tiny bit off the subject, but it's just kind of the same principle of getting from Lacey to downtown Olympia in various routes. Have there been any studies that show how congestion would be affected on 18th, on 22nd, as it loops into East Side and then into downtown Olympia?
I don't know. I can follow up with you on that if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be curious about that, because it, it's one of those, too, that's got driveways along the way, it's got parkland, it's got, you know, all kinds of stuff, so...
Okay.
And then further, to kinda add some more context, it's, again, my comment's not to say that it has to be there, it can never be changed, and in response to community means, I get that the community may see it in the plan, so that, oh, it's gonna be built. But it won't be built for long, it's a placeholder until we find the other solutions in place. And it's not saying we, it's gonna need to be built in the next five, 10, 15 years, but it's working together on figuring out what are the remedies of it are before we look at that regional loss.
Okay. All right, so some of the cons. It does remove a defined option for improving transportation connectivity in an area of the, the region that has experienced and will continue to experience significant growth. It increases future vehicle volumes and congestion on alternative routes with impacts to neighboring jurisdictions, Lacey included. It does undermine the long-term success of investments to other jurisdictions, that other jurisdictions have made to improve the regional transportation network that assumed the completion of the connection. And finally, it may reduce the urgency for the regional partners to address and resolve connectivity and congestion issues in this area, and it is not consistent with past planning decisions, including TRPC's action in 2023 concerning the matter. So, that is where I'm going to stop my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Katrina, that's very well done, and a lot of good information there. And so, again, coming back to the, the kind of two issues at hand with the regional transportation planning process, you know, again, it was reviewed initially before going out for public engagement with, by the Transportation Policy Board and TRPC. It's now gone through that public engagement process, and TRPC, and the Transportation Policy Board received those comments, and now are looking to take some final action on adoption. That could be queued up tomorrow and this Friday, but it sounds like if there's opportunity or need to continue the conversation, that conversation could occur into August and be, have, take finance by September. So it could be some time if there wants to be some more debate about this. But with that, again, it's, you know, whether to, you know, at the beginning of this presentation, the issue related to the language in the plan related to DEI and climate action, and then also the second areas which we spent the bulk of our presentation on with this log cabin corridor connection. So I'll offer right now is, you know, of course, staff recommendation, as Scott mentioned, is we would like to see the, the study done first, so we can work and figure out what those regional solutions are, and before removing it. And I guess we'll offer up to the council, if you have any more questions for staff, or if you would like to discuss this, to provide guidance going into this regional conversation this week.
I just want to go back to a letter from 2022. Has, is there anything factually different or prospective, different than that letter in 2022?
Has anything changed? More people?
No, and you know, that's kind of the point we were making earlier. There's, you know, because of this request, there's been some very, very high-level looks, but not the detailed analysis that should be undertaken in order to either confirm that it should be removed or confirm... it should be removed or confirm that it should stay. So nothing's changed, there's no...
Yeah, there's no study showing anything different than what we've always known.
Right, right.
So I just, I just want to kind of go back to the very beginning of this presentation, when we talked about the goals of regional planning. We talked about, you know, there's, there's five goals here, trying to increase multimodal transportation system, you know, connectivity for streets, roads, you know, increase public transportation options, increase connections for bicycling, increase connections for walking. In every one of those circumstances I just talked about, right now, we only have seen one option that will do that, which is the proposed connection here. Now, there may be an alternative out there, and there may be an alternative that has even maybe a little bit different route that saves more of the LBA Woods, and I'd be totally supportive of that. But my bigger worry here is, what does this do long-term to our regional planning, right? You know, this is something I've seen as the chair of the Transportation Policy Board, and over my 14, 15 years I've been chair, is these transportation plans take a long time to implement. It takes years and years and years. And what you need is consistent leadership to make sure each section's, you know, is followed through, and you have that long-term understanding of what the bigger picture is for reach, for the regional impact. For example, when we were, you know, right before I was on council, there was a ton of pushback for us to do our, our extension between Mullen, between Ruddle and, and College Street. I mean, a lot of pushback, if you remember right. I remember being on the other side of that, where I was, wasn't on council, and there was a lot of people who said, we, we don't want this connection. And even at the time, I was kind of like, yeah, no connection. It, but it wasn't until I got on council and I understood that this has been a commitment for this corridor for a long, long time. And so it takes a lot of strong leadership to sort of stick with long-term regional plans. And, and so my worry is, what does this mean for the Regional Plan Council long-term if we don't follow through with our commitments, right? And that is, I think, the bigger worry here. Not, not this connection, but what does this mean to our regional planning? Because if, at the, if, if there's a future corridor that needs to be built, and we all agree that needs to be built, but the last part doesn't happen because of understandable pressure. And I just want to say, LBA Woods people, I, they have every right, I don't blame them at all for, for their passion on, on this. They have every right to be, you know, come and say, we don't want this connection, because they are looking specifically at, at their back door. And I, I, I get that, I'm not going to blame them one bit. But it has a bigger regional impact to the entire community if you, if, until we see an alternative, if we don't leave it in. And so we made a compromise back in 2021 that, fine, let's do the study, and if you can come up with a, an alternative, we'll, we'll support that alternative. And here we are a couple of years later, nothing has changed, except, you know, a, a changeover in, on leadership on the Transportation Policy Board, and changeover on leadership at First Regional Plan Council's full board. That's the only thing that's changed. And so I, I think we are walking a, a, a unknown future, you know, i- if, if we go back on 40 years of planning at, at this stage of the game. And that's, I think that's the bigger concern here, not this connection, what does this mean for long-term regional planning? So is there a direction from this council of what you'd like me to?
I mean, I think, one thing that I was considering when we were talking about this at TRPC is just, I don't want our future forecasting of levels of service for the region to be based on a fantasy. Like Olympia has no intention of building this road. And so I agree we need to do something, and I even agree that we should get the study results first.
Agreed.
And that makes sense to me, that we need to explore all the options, because we do need some sort of pass-through here. We need improvements to that section of, like, the transportation grid. But insisting that log cabin road is the only way, when Olympia has said, we're not, we're not going to do that, just felt like, you know, basing a lot of things on something that wasn't real.
I absolutely, 100% agree with you. I'm not saying City of Olympia has to build, what I'm saying is, let's go, let's go back to what our original agreement was back in 2022, is that City of Olympia was going to do a study, and if they can come out with an alternative, 100% support that. And so, again, like, nothing's changed besides the leadership on, on TRPC Board and Transportation Policy Board.
Yeah, and I would, and I think we've talked about this a little bit here, and I've asked the question at TRPC of the representatives from Olympia. I would like to see this study completed sooner. I know it's, it is built into their larger, like, plan for a study, like, almost a million-dollar big study, where they're going to be studying a bunch of different roads and future projects. I would like to see this one expedited if it were possible, because of the regional significance of what we do here. And I don't know if that means pulling it out of that larger study that they intend or what, but I, it would be nice to have the results sooner, so that we could progress in this discussion.
And if there's an alternative, then we all need to be working on, on that alternative together.
Several things. One, 40 years back, when this was conceived, you know, nobody knew that this was going to be a big park at the time. Had they known that, I, I questioned whether they would have said, yeah, we need to just chop down trees and just punch this road through here. I just, the values of this community in this area, I think, would not have tolerated that.
But you have to understand that LBA Woods folks lobbied really hard to make this a park, to try to get this connection not to go through.
I'm just saying, yeah.
Right? And so, that, I mean, that's what happened here. And so, but originally, they were going to, Olympia said they were going to buy this so they could have the right-of-way for the connection. And so now they're coming back on saying, no.
And they even made the easement go right up against the baseball field fences, so that it would, wouldn't disturb as much of the park.
Yeah, and then they changed the whole design of the road, too. So, anyway.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I feel like we've done a lot to try to appease, you know, down the timeline of, okay, we'll change the project, that we'll do this study, but it's just like, no matter what we do, we just keep running into this, like, no, we don't want to do it. But I just think it's such a bad precedent. If Lacey just, you know, committed to doing something, and then 20 years down the road, everyone else does their part, and we're just like, yeah, no, we changed our mind, we don't feel like doing this. If someone, if there's a study that shows something different, I think that's, that's great, because I would love to save those trees. But I think it's on their own, if they change their mind on what they want to do with it, I think it's on them to show us that there's an alternative route to, to be able to accomplish that.
They have committed to having the study done by 2030, and if I'm not mistaken, we're going to be doing another update of the regional transportation plan around that time, aren't we?
It'll be five to six years.
So I can clarify, they can't commit to having it done by 2030, they can commit to having it started by 2030. So if log cabin stays in this plan for the next five years, we will be having this conversation again in five years.
And is that study, it's not necessarily that area, it's the broader, is it this for this area, or is it for the larger, all the...
I don't know the details on that. I assume that this might be a priority, given community passion and interest on it.
But if it's not in the plan of this extension, that, those priorities may change, because they may look at other areas of the city that want to do connectivity studies first. That's, that's, that's the unknown.
Right, and my understanding was it was going to be a study that would take in the needs of the southeast area of Olympia and its UGA.
On their website, it talks about a street connection study started in 2030, with log cabin road as a piece of it, but with other transportation and street connection needs in southeast Olympia, so. It's, it's bigger than just this one connection. Katrina, I wanted to ask, sorry, were you still going?
I just have one more thing. We received 84 public comments tonight on the thing. Unfortunately, we could only see one, because 83 of them were bundled into a giant file that apparently is not going through our system, and we can't put it on the lap, you know, get it on our iPads here. So could I request that they break it up in chunks, so that we can actually see what people are saying?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
I was able to see quite a few of them, I'm not...
There are two emails. Public comment one and public comment two.
And public comment one on my screen is showing no attachment, which tells me it's too big.
That's weird, it rendered online.
Well, again, is, do you have a, like, an official recommendation?
That's why I'm, are we supposed to, I mean, what type of action are we taking right now?
Part of it is, is Mayor Ryder is on the Transportation Policy Board, which is meeting tomorrow. Councilor Vasquez is on the TRPC Board, it's meeting on Friday. So the opportunity here is, with this topic's coming forward, is opportunity for the council to weigh in on what the council's perspective is on this issue, to give them guidance in their conversations at those meetings.
We need options.
I, I, option, I don't see a reason for removing it, so my conclusion would be option A until the study's done showing otherwise.
There's, there are options in the staff recommendations. I mean, I think we should talk about what is...
I'd like to see the study.
Yeah.
We can't force another jurisdiction to say, you're going to, you're going to do this, and you're going to do it now, because we want the answers.
No, I, I don't think, the thing is, is I don't think anything's changed since 2022.
So...
I don't think anything's changed.
In, in the staff report, it lists a couple of options for us, I think that can help us narrow down the choice. So we have option one, which is to support leaving log cabin road connection in the RTP until a regional traffic analysis is conducted in order to evaluate and understand the impacts of removing the project. Option two, support removing log cabin road connection from the RTP with a written agreement from Olympia that they will conduct a regional transportation analysis within the next five years to evaluate the impacts of removing the project. Option three, something else. Staffed, study other elements, yeah. So we have, we could come up with other options, but we got two options.
I think either one or two is perfectly fine with me. I, I mean, as long as there's a, a written agreement, and that the, the project will be added if the impacts, I mean, I'm fine with option number two.
Wasn't there a written agreement that they would do a study?
Did we have an ILO for the regional plan?
No, there was a direct, a agreement that in 2023, it was just a decision that we will wait to take this off the plan, after a study is completed showing alternative options, and that was moralized in the action in the minutes.
I mean, I'm, I'm also fine with option two. I think the conversation between us and Olympia will be important, because the, like, kind of the core of that option is having them commit to including log cabin road as a potential option within the study, or if the study shows that log cabin road is necessary, putting it back in.
What would be the difficulty of putting it back in if we removed it?
The easement would be gone, right?
Not necessarily.
Oh, all right.
Do they have plans to remove the easement?
I'm sorry, what?
Do they have plans to remove the easement?
Just not on the...
Not that I'm aware of.
And is there a staff recommendation?
Well, a staff recommendation is, you know, really, and I, I understand the argument that, well, they have stated they're not going to build it, they're not going to fund it, they don't want to sponsor it, but it is part of the regional transportation plan. And it's not, just because in the regional transportation plan doesn't mean there's a timeline of, of building it, but just saying before it comes off, our recommendation is to have the study done, because some of the alternatives, I mean, the Northeast connectivity study is just looking at that area, but some of the alternatives could be actually doing things in Lacey or the county portion of Yoma Highway to relieve that congestion. It's, it's a broader context in terms of regional ability. And so how do we do that as a regional project? And, and so my, my recommendation is, is that the, the study would be done first to look at all those options, and incorporate that into the following regional transportation plan update. And again, it's not to say they have to build it, it has to stay there forever, it's just where are those options, and where, where do we best work on it together?
So your, your recommendation is option number one?
Option one, if, option two is a commitment and a written understanding that they'll include that as part of that analysis, because once it comes off the plan, it's, it's five years, is it going to be one of the options studied? Is it, you know, where's that look in terms of the regional context? What's those parameters of that study?
My, my issue with option two specifically is that if we remove it, right now, there's currently kind of a lot of public support to get the study, or a lot of push to get the study done. If we remove it, it removes that kind of drive to get it done. So that's why option two just, I don't really think it's compromised, I think it's just a pushback until the next pushback.
Katrina, you said earlier that the financial impact of leaving it on was, was that dollars would be committed and/or reserved in some capacity, is that...
So basically, when we look, we look at all the funding available for transportation in the region, and that is dollars that the city takes in and county take in from taxes, we look at state dollars that have historically come to the region, and we look at federal dollars that have historically come to the region. And we project what we will have for the next 25 years. And so, taking that into consideration, understanding what jurisdictions spend on maintenance, maintenance and preservation, local projects and regional projects, we basically spitball and try and figure out what, what, how much do we have to spend on regional projects? And then we go through our list of projects and make sure that there's enough money to do all of them. If there's not enough money to do all those projects, then we have to have conversations about either finding additional funding, or starting to pull those projects off the list. Where we stand right now is that we have enough funding to do, in the region, to do all of these projects. If log cabin stays on, it's fine, if it comes off, we'll just have some more money to work with.
Again, I, I do think the bigger issue in the long-term here is the effects on regional planning. Because if we set this precedent, we're setting the precedent that any jurisdiction can do at the end of the day, can make any decisions they want, regardless of regional planning. So, you know, we received pushback from other jurisdictions, for example, on, on College Street, that we were unable to get full bike lanes in there. Well, right, it's, it's pretty tough to then have that argument that we should have some sort of county-wide standard, if each jurisdiction is, can really be just left up to their own, make their own decisions at the end of the day. So for me, it's like, this is the bigger issue, is, is where does regional planning come into this equation long-term? What's the importance of long-term regional planning? Are we committed to that, or are we more committed to individual jurisdictions making up their own minds on, on the regional transportation plan? And that is, I think...
I hear what you're saying, but I, I wouldn't frame it that way. And I, I think it's a little insulting to Olympia to sort of suggest that maybe they would just, you know, not get around to doing that plan if we didn't kind of force it with a vote. I mean, it's like saying we wouldn't be doing our work here in Lacey if, you know, if, if the situation were reversed. So I think Olympia already has it planned and budgeted that they're going to do this southeast study. And so, and it will apparently address that, as well as that whole other sector in there. So it's coming. I just, I feel uncomfortable when they've said, it's not in our comp plan, we're not, there's no sponsor. It just, it's sitting there, and it's making people unhappy, when in fact Olympia owns the land, they own the right-of-way, if, if a road were ever to be built there, they already have that, so that's not an issue anymore. And, you know, I just, I, I hear what you're... that. So that's not an issue anymore. And, you know, I just, I, I hear what you're saying, and I hear a big picture in regional transportation plan. But, but what if we were wrong 40 years ago when, when that was conceptualized?
Well, but, but, but the thing is, every plan, there's not, there hasn't been a study that shows that we haven't been wrong yet. Until the study shows that we are wrong, so be it. But I haven't seen a study that shows that we were wrong 40 years ago.
Or 20 years ago.
Or today.
Except, you know, they're talking about doing just that.
And, and when, and if they do it and there's a, an alternative, I will hundred percent support that alternative. But how, how can I support something that I, when I don't know what the alternative is?
I don't think they're out to prove us wrong in any capacity. I, I think, I, I'm definitely a supporter of leaving it on until we know what else is available, what else we can do. And that is not me trying to, you know, say anything bad against Olympia that's, that's sticking to the plan and finding more transportation options for the community from east to west across this county.
Go ahead, Scott.
Just a point I wanted to make. I was going to point out when that map was up there. It's very common to have arterials spaced on a one-mile grid. And obviously, that doesn't exist here. It's a, close to three miles from Yom Highway. If you go on the Wiggins Road alignment up to where you would intersect Martin Way, not one mile. And I think everyone would agree that the transportation grid in that area is extremely poor. There is no straight line from, you know, from, you know, say College Street over to, you know, Olympia near I-5. And so just by inspection, knowing what efficient communities install, this is anything but efficient. So removing that link, you know, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah. And some of that has to do with geography, right? We have three lakes that are, that stop it. You know, we have a, a lake right to the north, we have two, two to the south. I mean.
Land there is squishy.
Show me the alternative here. If there is one, I'll support it. But I don't, visually, I don't see much. That's why they came up with this 40 years ago.
And, you know, there seems to be an environmental concern a little bit with LBA woods and that. But please keep in mind that a long circuitous route takes more time, burns more fuel, more carbon, even if it's an EV, that power comes from somewhere. So, you know, that creates more pollution. Plus, you know, because it's a less efficient route and creates more reduction of level of service, that creates stalls, that creates delays, which means that vehicle is sitting there burning fuel longer. So there is an environmental consideration as well. And, and again, I think, you know, there's, there was an informed decision to put it on the map years ago, as has been communicated, that, you know, is still an informed decision, but it would be an uninformed decision to remove it in lieu of a study and documentation that would demonstrate that that's the right thing to do.
That, and goes against almost every single goal we have for regional planning, too, as we started off. I mean, the, the five goals that we have are met under this connection. If you take out the connection, they, maybe it could still be met, but you'd have to see the alternative to do that. Anyway, I, I will say at the end of the day, I, I think this vote, if, if, even if you direct me to go with, keep it in, it's, I don't know if it's going to pass the full Transportation Policy Board or the full TRPC Board at this point. So I think that is something to consider as well. And I do think it's going to have a long-term impact on our, our regional relationships and, and planning, too, if it fails.
Well, I'd like to offer a motion. I'd be more comfortable with option two that commits to the study. And so I'd like to offer that as the motion for the TPB meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion, second, to go with option number two?
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Um, you know, when we, when we were looking at our potential at the RAC and, and we really said, you know, let's, let's do a study, as opposed to just doing what we thought we need, this is our own stuff, as opposed to just doing what we thought, you know, we should do, even the staff recommendation.
For the RAC Phase Two.
For the RAC Phase Two. And then we, we said, you know what, we're going to study it and, and just take a look and see what's possible. And then when that study came through, I, we were all amazed at what was possible in that area, right? And we now have something to look forward to because we stopped and said, let's see what options that we have, right? We haven't, we don't have that luxury in this case because we don't know what the other options are. And that's why I'm uncomfortable taking it off, is because, so, so then we wait five years for a study that may happen? We, we need to see what, what, what can happen and what the possibility is. And I'm not saying that anything against Olympia or anything like that. It's just that we, we don't have enough reason to remove it at this point.
I guess what I'm asking is, how is the world going to change if a dotted line becomes a solid line on a piece of paper and nothing happens? I mean.
I totally understand the real world impact. I, but, you know, my years of regional transportation planning tells me you have to stick with a plan until an alternative is presented. That was the compromise we made in 2022. Nothing has changed since then. And so my, my regional planning hat says we need to stick with our plan, which is to keep it on until a study is done and a study presents an alternative, then let's go with the alternative. But we haven't gotten there yet. So we're still waiting on our original agreement we had in 2022. And that's, I don't think anything's changed for me.
I, I would say that I haven't seen any facts or statistics that would change what is currently recommended. And so if there's no facts or statistics, it's, changing it would be based off a motion. And I think it's not our job to make decisions that way. It's our job to make decisions based off the information that's presented to us. And I do not anywhere want to come close to thinking I know more than the city employees who have been doing this for their entire career. And so I could not, I could not go against that decision. And so removing it, I don't think would be currently, until something else is presented, a good idea.
Any other discussion?
Did I understand you to say that you would be comfortable with option two?
Um, no, I, I, after, after consideration, I'm, I'm not comfortable with option number two. I'm.
So you've changed your mind then?
Well, I was, after further consideration, yeah, I'm not comfortable with option two.
Okay.
So all in favor of the motion? Can I by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
So it fails, then, then we're left with, with option one. Let's do support leaving the log cabin road connection in the RTP until the regional traffic analysis is conducted in order to evaluate and understand the impacts of removing the project from the RTP. All in favor of that motion? More discussion?
Motion and second.
Motion and second. Discussion?
I mean, I, I will say this. I voted for option two, but one of the things I'm still focused on, which is being treated as ancillary, is the deadline for getting the RTP approved. I would really rather have us get it done by this week. I'm kind of uncomfortable with leaving it until October, even though the regional partners haven't said that there's a big concern with that that they can see. It makes me nervous that we would not have a plan in place that could jeopardize access to funding or whatever else. So I would, I would, whatever we do, I want to make sure that we can get it done by this week. And I think there's more opportunity for discussion between Lacey and Olympia on this. And like, maybe there is a chance for us to move the, the timeline for that study up. I would really like to see that happen. And I know that discussions like that or establishing some sort of written agreement take time. And I don't want to delay finalizing the RTP. You know, I don't want that to get in the way of finalizing.
I want to make it perfectly clear. I'm not saying Olympia has to build this connection. I'm not saying that all is up to Olympia to decide how, what's the, the best way to continue to move traffic through this proposed corridor. And if they can come up with an alternative, I will support that alternative. But until I see an alternative, I can't possibly, with my regional planning hat on, be in favor of not having that plan first. Any other discussion?
Call the question.
You've made the motion and it was seconded by Councilor Vasquez.
And all in favor of that motion to keep option one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes. Okay. Thank you.
Now we're on the FIFA fan zone.
Yes, thank you. FIFA fan zone proposal. So if you recall, at the last work session, yes?
Should we also have a vote to give direction to Councilmember Vasquez about the DEI and climate change language in the transportation plan?
You know, at, at this point, the TRPC has already made a decision to keep it in. I was just trying to give some background information on what the intent of the Transportation Policy Board was at the time, which was to protect our transportation projects through 2030, since those projects have already been selected. I think it's out of our hands now if those projects are going to be actually funded. There is so many other things that have come up since we, that, that original discussion happened with Executive Director and that original recommendation came down from NLC and everyone else. There's so much else have happened. The idea of, hey, can we just take the language out and maybe still get our projects through? That, that, those days are gone, in my opinion. And so it, I don't think there's any discussion at this point. We might, you know.
The language stays.
It was, if there was some way we could have got the projects built and we could just take the language out, got the projects built, then that was my recommendation. At now, I don't think that's going to happen. So I don't, I don't think it's worth a discussion. I mean, I'll just, you know, leave it in at this point. Right?
Are you comfortable leaving it there?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that, that catch, too. And go back to the FIFA Fan Fest proposal. At our last work session, we did a quick highlight of what this conversation was to come. We did a quick overview of the Fan Fest program. Again, with a quick summary, this Olympia-Lacy area was designated by the Seattle FIFA Club as a, as a fan zone site. That's one of several designations across the, the state. That includes Spokane, Billingham, Bremerton, Seattle, Tacoma, Olympia-Lacy, and Vancouver. The idea behind the fan zones is, as you, we all are aware, coming up this next summer in 2026 is the World Cup, and the North American countries, Canada, the United States, and Mexico are hosting the World Cup this year. And there will be several matches that will be played in the United States, including the city of Seattle. And so the idea behind the fan zones is to create these areas where soccer fans can gather and during soccer matches times, and gather, be able to watch the matches on the big screen TVs and, and also, you know, music and, and kind of a festive environment. The, the, there are be, with the, the fan zone designation is to make sure that there's six separate fan zone events that coincide with six preliminary soccer matches, and then four alternate events that would be the semifinal bronze and final matches that could be also an option for local fan zones to host. Those events are run from June 15th through July 19th. So almost a full month of activities, and those events are spread out by several days in between. So it being designated, there's been an interest in the region with Thurston County, City of Olympia, Tomahor, and Lacey have some conversations about what it would take to host such an event. And, you know, what, what that conversation included is like potential locations, what would be a kind of general outline of, of what the event would look like, and resource needs from the local community. Being that this is going to be less than 12 months away, doesn't leave a lot of time for planning, implementation, as well as fundraising from the private sponsored community. One of the things that was challenging is, and delayed some of our planning, is we didn't have a, a, a agency or NGO early on being able to sign on as the prime sponsor, be able to sign a non-disclosure agreements with the Seattle FIFA Club to be able to get all the parameters of what it would take and requirements for hosting the event. Through the conversations, Thurston Chamber stepped up, was willing to take on that role in order to get the, in essence, playbook, and then start looking at what, what it would look like in terms of event planning. So in your packets is the outline of the scope that was prepared by the Thurston Chamber. And, and again, they're, they're looking at attracting for each one of those events somewhere between 2,500 and 5,000 people. The events would include food and beverage vendors, cultural soul case and community programming, sponsor activities, family-friendly entertainment. There was some interest, some talk about hosting such an event at the Regional Athletic Complex. However, with not having a lot of information what that would look like, the location of the, the Regional Athletic Complex down Marvin Road away from some of the commercial amenities, and then also with the activities scheduled at the RAC on an annual basis, having to take those activities offline for a full month in order to accommodate this, it was quickly identified as not maybe a gray solution, even though we would love to host it. And then it defaulted down to looking at the Port of Olympia Peninsula property. And one of the aspects to that being identified as a location is Port Olympia offered it up, and they've pulled other events down in that area, like the South Sound Block, Music Block Festival, and other similar events. Again, that would, there, there would take a, a large lift going into next year with not a lot of time. The Thurston Chamber put together a preliminary budget. The total budget they would see to host these events was, is estimated to be about 1.5 million, and also includes some in-kind staff, in-kind support from each of the jurisdictions. Those costs look like they could be offset somewhat by some estimated income totaling about $525,000. That income would come from food vendors, beer garden, sales of fangears, ticket sales, and then private sponsorships. Some of the potential positive impacts of helping these events, if there are people traveling from outside of the Thurston County area, they may be staying overnight in hotels, spending dollars in some restaurants if these events are located here. So that's a quick rundown. The ask that was presented to all four jurisdictions, the county, Olympia, Tomahor, and Lacey, is try and identify funding sources to help support this effort. And the current proposal was that that cost, that 1.5 million dollars would be split four ways between the part of the county and the cities. So that would equate to a, about $395,000 for the city of Lacey. And then also because the cash flow and, and planning for this event needs to start immediately, they're looking to have that broken up in four installments over the next four quarters, which would total somewhere around $97,000 per quarter starting forward. So that's the general ask. So all the jurisdictions are going back to their councils to kind of see what the, the temperature is. One thing I, I do need to talk about is, and I can go in more detail, but just at the high level, is this is a very difficult and challenging time for, I think, all of us in the region in terms of our municipalities because of our budget outlooks. There is really no general fund dollars that could go towards this type of effort with not a certain, without knowing what that return on investment would, would be. Again, there are, you know, it could be some ancillary hotel stays that occur out of these events, or even in general for people traveling up to Seattle. So there may be some correlation with, with lodging tax dollars, but in terms of general fund dollars, there isn't capacity there to really. to general fund dollars, there isn't capacity there to really support that. I do want to hit on some of the in-kind services, what they identify as, what that would look like, some of that stuff we could be able to do, like promotional support through city communication channels, getting, passing out the word, advertisement, use of city-owned lots for overflow parking and shuttle service to the event, staff allocation sit on communications, transportation, waste, and EMS communities to make sure we're coordinating and communicating what those events would be, designation of elected official for, to a steering committee, banner display on city property, and encouragement for staff to volunteer at events. One other aspect that has probably a direct correlation to resources and cost would be with these type of events, if there are some large crowds down in that area, it's going to take a lot of work with the city of Olympia to coordinate their emergency safety personnel. So that would, could mean some of our mutual aid, we may, may look at in kind of providing back in support like we normally do in, when events arise in Olympia or other ways, other areas in the region. So that could be significant and could be an impact on our current resources for law enforcement and, and could be costly because then you're starting to get into more overtime type scenarios. So it does, even if it's in-kind, it still has some costs associated I don't want to gloss over. But with that, I'll stop there before we get more details about, you know, some options and the funding issues, just kind of see if there's any questions or clarity or if any of the other council members that have been involved in these conversations would like to add to it.
So yeah, I've been a part of this since early on when they asked if there was interest in becoming a fan zone. The mayors were approached. Of course, we were, we were interested in seeing what that was going to look like. And we've been sort of interested all along understanding what the economic impact could be. What we didn't know was, you know, how much support we were going to get from FIFA, was there dollars attached? We didn't know what the, the cost was going to be. We also sort of, there's, there's been some conversation between the jurisdictions and understanding, you know, these are really tough budget times. And these dollars, if they're going to come from the, the cities to help, you know, pull this off, besides the in-kind, was most likely going to have to come from LTAC dollars. That's what LTAC dollars are for. And we thought maybe we could put some LTAC dollars to this. Now, we do have some LTAC dollars in reserve that we could front load for, for this event. But those LTAC, those reserve dollars would need to be replenished over time, if not in one year, maybe at the most in two years. And so in order to do that, we will have to realize that our LTAC dollars that we'd go to other recipients, maybe over a two-year period, would be reduced. And that is decision, I think, needs to go to the LTAC committee. All right. I'm not, what, what I'd be okay with at this point, since the LTAC committee is about, is going to be later this week.
Thursday.
On Thursday, is I would say, okay, LTAC committee, take a look at reserves and can you come up with a plan to be able to replenish those reserves within like a two-year period and give us a dollar amount about what you commit to this event. And I'll leave it up to LTAC committee to see if you guys can, if there's enough support from the LTAC committee to divert that, those reserves and come up with a plan on how you replenish them. But they will need to be replenished because those reserves are set aside for some future replacement of the rack.
Fields.
Fields. And we, you know, it's not happening right now, but we'll need, we'll need it to be replenished at some point. And then, you know, that means those will not be paid back. You're going to have to make some decisions on who, whose funding gets reduced over the next couple of years. So that would be my recommendation. And then, once we have an idea of what that number is, I would then, you know, direct Rick to, to say, hey, this is the dollars Lacy's can commit. See what the dollars from Olympia, where, where anyone else can commit and see if we can actually pull this off with the dollars that we have available. But there's a lot of questions that need to be answered between now and then, and we don't have a lot of time to answer them. And so.
And I believe, I know Councilman Dunn has a question, but just for context, all the jurisdictions are starting to have these conversations now. I believe Tomwater's talking about it to now, right now, the county's going to be within the next couple of weeks or end of, later part of July. So we do have to have these conversations to kind of develop where we, what we can do, but coming together in August with some, some final strategies of this as a go or not.
And the other thing is, is since we're committing a significant amount, possibly a significant amount of our LTAC dollars, there has to be some conversation about, since Olympia is receiving, you know, it's downtown Olympia, they're receiving additional revenue for this, there has to be some sort of, something talked about that, that revenue sharing in conjunction to the, a percentage in conjunction to the dollars that puts in from the jurisdiction wherever that needs to be too. So there's a lot that needs to happen here and a lot of time. But Nick, what's your?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, first of all, just how nice it is to actually get some stuff put together for this because we've been going a long time, like with a lot of what ifs. So getting something on paper is great. And I really want to thank the chamber for putting that together because that's, that's a big heavy lift and they came in and they did this pretty quickly. So my, my kind of question with the income, was there discussion about splitting that, whatever income comes, splitting that as a reimbursement for, for those funds potentially or?
There are, in the high level conversations, yeah, that was all part of the possibility. I do want to make sure that there's going to be different perspectives too because it's going to be downtown, the Port Peninsula property is closer to, you know, Olympia's going to get some more potential revenue off of that versus, you know, as you go out further from the event. But they're also going to be having a lot of resources directly impacted and, and trying to serve that. So there's going to be their perspective, you know, the same way with Tomwater, they're going to look at this as, well, we're, you know, a very small community compared to everybody else. How's this proportionate fair share out? So there's a lot of conversation need to look at. And then how do we sort out what that revenue share, if we can get there, would look like?
And that kind of leads to my other question was, you know, I know this was kind of an even ask split between the, between the jurisdictions, you know, but, you know, could it make sense to make it, you know, proportional to overall budget or, you know, something along that lines where it's, you know, I understand different, different jurisdictions are going to have different amounts of input as well too, based off services, but.
I, I think the big question is, is how much are we willing to give, you know, on the LTAC side? We need to know that number. We need to be able to give that number to, you know, say, hey, this is where Lacey can come in at. And then we need to see where the rest of the region can come in at to understand what that final number is, to see if we can pull this off based on, right? And so there's a, there's a lot of.
What kind of deadlines are we kind of tentatively looking at? Because I know this is.
Well, so with the LTAC, so just back up a little bit, with currently, our applications for LTAC this year are, are opened up. They just were opened up just yesterday. And so we're accepting applications to be considered for 2026 funding. Typically, we go through that process, the LTAC committee reviews all the applications, make recommendations for funding the council, and then the funding dollars are available January 1 for, for commitment. And of course, it's on a reimbursement, reimbursement schedule. The, what the mayor's talking about is within reserves, we have reserves in place for field replacement as well as two, a two-month operating reserve as well. So there's about 231,000 that's unassigned. But again, the $500,000 for field replacement in 2029 is probably going to be a lot more. We need to continue to build up that reserve to be prepared for that. So that 231 would eventually be normally assigned at the end of the year to, to that aspect. So what that could look like is, and we still got to look at how, work with, join the finance department to make sure this can work and also with Shannon and the LTAC committee, is if you lose reserves, that might be able to get the dollars out a little bit sooner than January 1. But that's a conversation I think we need to have with the LTAC committee and then also how we make sure that those reserves are made back whole going into that 2026 funding. So there's, there's some conversations we need to have to see how that could work. We just kind of developed a strategy in the last couple of days. But the LTAC dollars are related to hotel stays, which could be correlated to, to this type of event.
And the first idea is like, well, and I think this needs to be up to LTAC. Do we have, if we assign the reserves now, do we make it up in one year? Or do we make it up over two years? I'm not comfortable going more than two years because we need to, but that's a discussion, I think, more for LTAC committee than for.
Yes. And it, and what I would recommend to the LTAC committee and all is make sure we can, make sure the rack funding is whole because that is one, one of the biggest drivers in the region and we need to make sure that that is as whole as possible. But looking at reserves and trying to pay back the LTAC dollars for this event would affect the funding amounts that could be distributed out to our other events that occur in, in the community as well.
Either over one or two years.
So those are the type of things that the LTAC committees are going to need to look at, wrestle with, and make a recommendation to council. So there's still some process left.
Couple of questions. I noticed that they were, you know, dividing the cost equally among the jurisdictions there. Tomwater has much less ability. I mean, you know, so what happens when Tomwater says, oh, we can only come up with a third of that? And then our numbers tend to go up.
That's what I'm saying. I think we're going to have to come up with what is the final number we can all come up with.
Yeah.
And then, and see what that is and say, can you do it with this money? Or you maybe have to scale some of this back, maybe only do three events instead of five? I don't know, but.
And in our discussions at the.
You have to do all five.
We, the, the 1.5 is very conservative. So it's inflated. And so the, you know, what the, they were saying was like, you know, hey, this, this, this very well could be less than 1.5, but the revenue share was also a pretty conservative estimate. So it could be higher. We don't really know that. And we also talked about the, you know, when it comes to the revenue share, we would use that to, to kind of replenish some of those dollars. We just don't know how well that's going to turn out. So, so we'll have a real robust discussion on this on Thursday when LTAC meets at 3 o'clock. One of the things that I, in this situation was, you know, initially I thought this was going to be at the rack. That was the, those were some of the initial conversations. And then in this last meeting, somehow it was decided, I don't know who decided it, but then it was going to be at the port. And so I was really hopeful for some Lacey hotel stays if it was at the rack, but.
I still think we can see some Lacey hotel stays out of this if it's done right. It's just not going to be the same, quite the same impact. But, you know, I understand why they'd want to do it down at the port. Yeah, it's down, you know, there's a whole host of reasons why that makes a lot of sense. But that's all else to come into consideration and what the ILA looks like and, and all that. But like I said, I, I have full faith that LTAC can come up with a good recommendation on, on that. And I just, you know, I'm sort of waiting to see what LTAC is going to recommend on what that dollar amount needs, could be coming from Lacey going forward.
Yeah. And this was the reason why I wanted to get this out to you guys in the last work session two weeks, a couple of weeks ago, is just so that you guys could have a view of, you know, what was coming and what kind of dollars we were probably talking about. And, and also the revenue share. I wanted to make sure that that got out there too, because if the revenue share projection works, you know, then it looks like our portion would be a lot less than, well, I won't say a lot less, but less than the 392 that you see on that paper. But I still, you know, we, obviously we can't cover this with general, general fund dollars. So we have to look at LTAC.
And nobody else can either.
No.
We're all sucking lemon.
And so as we go through this, we can define, here's what we can provide. Tomwater does the same, Canada the same, Olympia does the same. Then all of a sudden, here's the pot, whatever that number is, can the private sector raise the donation, the sponsorships that way or not? And that's going to be the decision if this is going forward. So.
This is just the first step.
Can you say again the attendance numbers that they were anticipating?
They were, so Thurston Chambers based off their, their work with the governor's ball, but they're looking at, I think Seattle Club FIFA would say expect between 25 and 5,000. And I believe the number that Thurston Chambers kind of is a, is a conservative number is looking at planning for 2,500.
I think it's been more than that.
It's hard to tell because we don't really know what these events will look like, especially with the number of FIFA fan zones and who's attending.
Yeah. And so, I mean, you think about how that compares impact wise to, yeah, like a big festival downtown, like Harbor Days or Lake Fair or?
That's what I'm saying. I think it's going to be, this, this region's very, very, very supportive of soccer in general. It's part of our identity. It has been for a long time. I think it's, you know, that this is going to be the biggest event we've had in, you know, Western Washington since the, you know, World Fair. And so, you know, I, but there's a lot of unknowns. We, I just don't think anyone knows what this, what this could be. I think there's a very good potential, but until you.
Through it a little bit more. It'd be interesting to see. I'll see if I can get a better number of estimates. I looked in this material, it don't really say anything in there. And I had heard the number anecdotal, so I want to make sure I'm accurate.
That seems really low.
But also do, I don't know where those people are coming from. That's the other big question.
One of the things that they were saying was, you know, their, the expectation is about somewhere between 650 and 750,000 people will be coming to the state of Washington to, to be a part of this, this activity. And so there's, there's Vancouver, there's Olympia-Lacy, and then there's Seattle. So those are your three options in Western Washington.
Tacoma.
Oh, so there's one, it's Tacoma, sorry. Four.
Bremerton too, isn't it? Didn't you mention that?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, on I-5.
Oh, on I-5, okay.
On the south side of Seattle, yeah.
Right. And then there's, there's Billingham and.
Yeah, everyone's.
And Billingham is on I-5, but they're a lot of our reach.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess, I don't want to sound like I'm poo-pooing this, but it just makes me nervous, the financial commitment when we already are so, we know we're going to have big budget challenges as is. And I'm not comfortable not having a firm number about what we have and what we can offer. And then we go, I mean, what happens if we say, okay, we're in, we, we can commit to this number, and suddenly there's this great big, bigger bill than any of us anticipated?
I think we have to be very upfront. Like this is, this is the LTAC dollars we can give to it. And that's got to be the number.
And I think the direction looking for tonight is it sound reasonable to, to the council to refer this to the LTAC committee to start looking at this and kind of identify what that number looks like. So then we can see if we move it forward to the next step.
At this point, we're not committing ourselves to anything, right?
Just trying to have LTAC give a recommendation on what that number could be. And then, will that number be good enough to make, for the region to make this thing happen?
And one of the challenges, part of that is, this is a preliminary conversation too, because I did ask the Thurston Chambers to submit an application to LTAC. And we also want to make sure we keep the spirit of a competitive pool of review too. So we're looking at everything in that process.
And LTAC meets on Thursday, so you guys will hear about it sooner than later.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. We'll do it as proud.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you guys can figure it out. Okay. With that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you for the discussion day. Really appreciate it. So without objection, I will call this meeting adjourned and you keep it classy, Lacey.